We have the Congress.
Thanks, Jim.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. This is the February tenth, two thousand and twenty. Westminster City Council is meeting, correct, to show that all councilor and present senior staff and attorney in office. I'd like to get through our review of our agenda. We have our typical items, the pledge of allegiance, the first action being to consider it a little bit until January finishes. We have one presentation to hold before we can proceed. After that, we need to go to the next.
That's right.
I had the C.C. four C.A. board meeting on Friday. At the meeting, there was something that this region might be relevant to the, you know, starting with Florida before they were looking at potentially changing the current requirement that every single policy objective has to have unanimous support. Not each individual councilor for each community, but of each community. And so they had a group of three kind of study that had come back as a recommendation that the board accepted, which was that this is a really foundational element of the organization. And so they decided to keep that unanimous support. They also would like me to see the policy principles from really high levels, without a lot of the mandatory language, and even low level, you know, typically having those board meetings, maybe some tweaking at words, but not massive changes in the policy statement. That was a great bit. I'm just going to say something in the group on that. They also wanted to remind the group that the policy that the agency has to interpret that policy, the agenda, how they're going to go forward on this, there's still leverage in there and your concern at all about how it's going to be implemented to have your voice really close to them. So there was that. Also, going after a lot of the, you know, they're going after a bunch of grants. And so, I can't remember if the grant agency, but they have done a lot of other grants to nonprofits and it's, they're going out for one year to have the, we have some, there's a lot of discussion, do we want to have the revenue source of this organization deleted by having grants or do we want to have it primarily be membership driven? And it's primarily membership driven, with the exception of some, that has specific purposes and that's why it's called. Actually, councillor Bowles and councillor Seymour and I attended the Community Awareness Action Team meeting, which definitely gave me a presentation on the impacts of legalization of marijuana on our police force. And it was very, it was incredibly informative and all that. I think it was very objective. This is what, these are the new things that we've come and encountered. I did not personally realize how large the black market had gotten and what for being a fraction of our police budget for marijuana enforcement is now, if I remember correctly, ten percent of the, so it was definitely a good talk.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. This is the February tenth, two thousand twenty. Westminster City Council is convening for the show that all councilor and present senior staff and state attorney in office. I get through our review of our agenda. We have our typical items. First action being to consider a little bit of the January process. We have one presentation. After that.
That's right.
I had the C C four C A board meeting on Friday. At the meeting, there was one thing that this region might relevant to the. I thought it up before they were closing it potentially changing the current requirement that every single policy objective has to have unanimous support, not each individual councilor for each community, but of each community. And so they had a group of three kind of study that had come back as a recommendation that the board accepted, which was that this is a really foundational element of the organization. And so they decided to keep that unanimous support. They also would like me to see the policy principles from really high level without a lot of the mandatory language and even high level. You know, specifically having those board retreats, maybe some tweaking at words, but not massive changes in the policy statement. That was a great bit. And that's in the group on that. They also wanted to remind the group that the policy committee, which was sort of often has to interpret that policy. The agenda. How they're going to go forward on this. There's still leverage in there and you're concerned at all about how it's going to be implemented to have your voice really close to them. So there was that. Also going after a lot of. They're going after a bunch of grants. And so. But they have done a lot of other grants to nonprofits and it's they're going out for one year to.
Great job.
There's a lot of discussion. Do we want to have the revenue source of this organization deleted by having grants or do we want to have it primarily be membership driven? It's primarily membership driven with the exception of some. It has specific purposes. Actually, a councillor, Vol and councillor, they were and I attended the Community Awareness Action team meeting, which definitely gave a presentation on the impacts of legalization of marijuana on our police force. It was very, it was incredibly informative and all that. I think it was very objective. This is what these are the new things that we've come and encountered. I did not personally realize how large the black market had gotten and what for being a fraction of our police budget for marijuana enforcement is now, if I remember correctly, ten percent. So it was definitely a good talk.
So the mayor was requested to sign on the letter over the Senate bill. Which is these legislation. Basically changes to the special person statute. And it specifically changes some concerning language, but in fact, construction defect legislation and construction defect mitigation, which is concerning to us because it it rolled back some. Development of smokes by attached housing. So the mayor asked to sign on a letter requesting it. That's what suggests. Yeah, this is this is similar language, similar language which we proposed previously. Previous sessions.
I have a question. Sponsor.
Senator. For the radio station. The sort of the question. The Senator. Um. For the recommended. Uh, position. I don't see a mouth. He just. Why do you watch that? Which is pretty. You guys can get something to get back.
What those actions coming out, is there something that we're all getting. I just do better. That could be a form where just the council so that we can have.
Yeah. Well, you know, what's got to be the first.
You know, he doesn't want to be. That's where it's important.
Letters.
Back and listen to. All right.
Oh, hi. Did they say?
Was the last time we did a study. On that stretch of road. Right, was one of the last time we did a study on Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, if it was.
I think the last active thing there is the investment. We're partnering with Adam's County to figure out. Next two presenting questions because we're trying to figure out what is. We have. I'll be happy to share whatever. And I'll be awkward if I do it in the middle. Yeah. Yeah. However, it's been a discussion for a long period. You can talk to me, I think it's too bad in our T D to make sure that they're engaged and supportive of the study with our T D offer to do more student modeling and house to support us. So that's the same thing again. I'm positive. And that has to help. We're definitely not together on stage.
My other question for you is, I believe that we're heading for the twenty twenty one. But what we have a new development with St. Mark's. Proposed. So what does that look like as far as timing and making an appropriate comprehensive of this study? I think they felt so much they're aware of that. Today. Yeah. So as we're looking at like our existing traffic and issues there that include everything from street lighting and crosswalks to speeds, we know the opportunity for many workers to attention. With the options.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe I found the answer. So who has a lead on it? Our, our, we're leading with the six hundred thousand and then we'll portion out to our other partners. I believe I read that. Okay, so then our, our actual portion ends up being two hundred and sixty two thousand five. Our sound between ads count and federal lines of portion.
Question. So when they present federal taxes, their small budgets are able to press to pay fifty five thousand dollars. Possible, we think that. Intersections together will be able to. So. Travel on quarter as well as. And I did put in my note on that as a county and federal. So there's.
Other question on ten A. Moving on item ten B. Porter or Roy case. Questions. Just really quickly, it looks like we're being asked a double contract here. Is that because there are being. Was there is that? We anticipate. I didn't see why. Why part I didn't see it here. Why are we doubling our. Back to our share.
It's not really a doubling of the contract in that sense. Maybe the contract. Circle twenty two case. Twenty seventeen. Be gone.
Yeah.
Anticipate.
Actually, then should we consider that? Should we be prepared this once the date is done? This word being said, we will possibly see another increase in it.
This will last. Cost that we would have. The whole business. Maybe dozen or so proposers, they were looking at the case, which included the state. You're only going to continue your negotiation. Answer questions to their satisfaction.
Only.
Yes, try to.
Hey, hey, good to see you. Fantastic.
Time to extend to because we know that. Ask. It's like.
That'd be kind of part of our. Engaged in it, but I'm just curious. Does it come hard or. Always.
What's mentioned in the paper is we did a will of test case. Shares.
And how that went.
We're seeing.
Talking about.
Oh.
Tell me how all these instruments that were placed in.
Yeah. Yeah. Answer.
To continue. My piece.
Whatever.
It about to change.
I would say. How much water do we treat out here? And how.
This one. Yeah, that I see it. Yeah. Sorry. Like a mine. Yeah. So. Actor. Search. Very true. I'm.
Yes.
Now. Sorry. Side over.
I'm saying. Because.
We're working for you. Sorry, I didn't ask for these because I go somewhere saying like. Like, yeah. I am. How do you? No, no, I brought, believe it or not, several pieces. Let's just. So I can be prepared. Well.
Have I damaged anybody's hearing aids like mine? I apologize. Are we all set now? Okay, we'll try that one more time. Good evening, this is the February tenth, two thousand twenty, uh, city council meeting. We ask you all please at this point to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, united, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Parker, if you would, take the roll, please.
Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Councilor Demont.
Here.
Mayor Proton Sights.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Vols.
Here.
All right, first item on the agenda tonight is the consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting of January the twenty-seventh, Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh and January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty meetings presented.
Ms. Scully.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your non-motions carried. First item on the agenda tonight is a presentation regarding the development review process. I'll turn it over to the staff at this point.
Thank you. Mayor and councilors, can you hear me okay? All right, thank you.
Turn it up some, Dan.
Okay, testing, how's that? No.
Keep going.
How about now? That was scary.
Going from one extreme to the other.
Okay, now we'll begin, thank you, mayor and councilors. I'm Rita McConnell.
We still need to get it up on our screens.
Oh, okay.
Now it's coming up. Now we got it.
Now we're good, all right. I'm Rita McConnell, planning manager. John McConnell is also in attendance. We never get tired of saying we're not related. He supervises the planners in development review and helped assist me with this presentation this evening. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the typical development review process for those items requiring public hearings before planning commission and city council. It is my hope this presentation will show how comprehensive the process is. I am presenting this information because we've been hearing a lot of questions from the public about this process. We also have new council members that might have these very same questions. This is an information-only item, no action is going to be required by city council. This presentation will take approximately twenty minutes. This slide shows the relationship of all documents that govern development review. It is the city charter, the first box in this row, that authorizes the city to make its own development rules, which are shown on the second row. These development rules are guided by the vision documents shown in the first row. The city's vision documents include the comprehensive plan and the city's strategic plan. The Westminster Municipal Code, the various design guidelines and standards, and the engineering standards provide the regulatory code that implements the vision and provides the framework for the entire development review process. The third row shows the development documents that the applicant is responsible for submitting. These include comprehensive plan amendments, planned unit development zoning, preliminary development plans, and official development plans. The foundation for development in the city begins with the comprehensive plan, so I will begin there. The comprehensive plan, which I will now continue to refer to as the comp plan, establishes a vision which lays out the community's desires for physical development in the city. Comp plans have guided city growth since at least nineteen ninety-seven. This particular vision on this slide was adopted by council as part of the comp plan update in twenty thirteen after considerable stakeholder input. This included residents, businesses, developers, adjacent cities and counties, and external agencies such as the Denver Regional Council of Governments, the Colorado Department of Transportation, and the Rocky Mountain Airport Authority, and this is just to name a few of them. The comp plan also provides a cohesive approach to reach the vision through guiding principles. These principles express support for Westminster's continued growth and further evolution into an active, diverse, and livable city. A lot more information on these principles are described in the comp plan and staff refers to these when reviewing development projects. These guiding principles builds on the city vision and serve as a platform for goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. There are seven major topic areas in the plan as listed on this slide that deal with the physical development of the city, and each of these contain goals and policies. This slide has an example of a goal and a policy. Basically, the goal states the desired end result, the policy tells us how to get there. All of these are considered when evaluating a development proposal's compliance with the comp plan. One of the most important functions of the comp plan is to establish the appropriate location for all the land use designations in the city. The key to the left shows the sixteen distinct land use designations for private properties that are mapped by color code throughout the city. These range from a variety of residential densities to mixed-use development, which combines residential and non-residential uses, and finally, there are several categories of non-residential uses. Each of the land use designations have their own information sheets in the comp plan depicting the expected development and include character images, a narrative intent statement that help describe what the development should generally look like. There is also a list of potentially allowed land uses, and there are minimum and maximum intensities established. These information sheets and goals and policies contained in the comp plan are heavily relied on in reviewing development applications. Compliance with these land use designations are mandatory. The comp plan takes precedence over existing zoning on property. In Westminster, this is unique compared to many cities in the metropolitan area. If the proposed land use is not compliant, a comp plan amendment would be required for development plans to be considered. The city's strategic plan was developed to reinforce long-term planning for both the city's operating needs and capital programs. Operating needs deal with day-to-day operations of the city and services the city provides. Capital programs deal with long-term investment projects such as road construction and sewer maintenance. Development proposals may impact both the operating needs and capital programs, thus the strategic plan is helpful to consider during development review. The city's strategic plan also sets forth a vision. This vision is complementary to the comp plan and provides further expression of the city's intent for development. The strategic plan also sets forth six major goals. Staff makes a statement of how a development proposal fulfills any or all of these goals and every staff agenda prepared for public hearing. As you can see, there are a lot of policy guidance the staff relies on considering a development proposal. The Westminster Municipal Code, the adopted design standards and guidelines, and the engineering standards are the technical tools that implement these policies. Every detail is addressed, the review process, the development standards, and the approval criteria for every application type. Now let's take a look at the overall development review process for public hearing items. First, I would like to emphasize that the development review process is considered quasi-judicial. This means that the planning commission and city council act like a court when reviewing development proposals. They will apply the laws and facts gathered at public hearings to make decisions. This also means that planning commission and city council can only consider what they hear about the project from staff, the developers, and the public only through this public hearing process. This allows all voting parties to hear all the same information in the same format and context. It creates an equal playing field and ensures fairness for all parties, both the developer and the residents as well. Prior to public hearings, you may have received comments from concerned citizens directly. You do the legally correct thing and turn over such correspondence to staff, and then we include it in the packets for your reading before the public hearing. Now let's take a look at that flow chart. The typical process generally takes six to twelve months before you may see a proposal, although larger projects and many infill projects may take longer because they're highly complex. During the project concept stage, this is shown on the first row of this flow chart, there is only a staff review. This stage is meant to inform the applicant of the process required for their proposal and identify issues. This takes approximately two weeks and involves staff from multiple departments such as community development, economic development, public works, parks, and fire. Department heads are involved for policy direction, for example, with comp plan amendments, and also with exceptions to development standards. Up to thirty staff may be involved in these early discussions. During the document preparation and review stage, shown on the second row of the flow chart, the first submittal of the development application is received. Review of this submittal involves all departments again, external agencies are also invited to comment. At this stage, up to forty-five people may have reviewed the project and will make comments on it. After the first submittal is completed, an applicant-hosted neighborhood meeting is required. The Westminster Municipal Code requires notification to property owners within three hundred feet of the project boundary. The code does not restrict us to this, however. On occasion, we have opened that up to five hundred feet and a thousand feet in some cases. We also use emails when we have this information available, and we also now use the website and social media to get the word out. The neighborhood meeting allows nearby residents or businesses time to voice their opinions on the project, and the applicant can then make modifications on their next submittal. Interested parties may also review the project proposal electronically through e-Track-It. The city website provides information on how to access this portal and planning staff can help as well. can help as well. The next major stage, shown on the third row, is review completion and public hearings. During this stage, additional submittals are required until all issues are resolved. This may include two or more additional reviews. Staff then prepares the staff report referred to as the staff agenda, and that's provided to both Planning Commission and City Council, and we make findings and recommendations on the project. And this report also includes all the correspondence we've received, so the public is able to get their information in advance to the public hearing body. The Planning Commission typically makes recommendations to City Council on most development proposals, and the City Council has the approval authority. And now I'm going to briefly walk through four types of applications that City Council has approval authority for, starting with the Comp Plan Amendment. The Comp Plan document is a 20-year plan but is updated regularly, approximately every seven years. This update process takes approximately two years and involves thousands of people. We are in the middle of an update right now, with completion expected later in 2020. The older an existing Comp Plan gets, the more frequent council might see requests for Comp Plan amendments. Comp Plan amendments deal only with the change in the use and/or the intensity of a potential future development. It's important to note, for most of the land use designations, the Comprehensive Plan specifies maximum intensities. Maxims may not be achievable, and there are a number of reasons why not, including topography, drainage patterns, flood plains, wetlands, required rights of ways, public land dedication, the city's ability to actually provide services, and other public improvements that may not be timed, such as road improvements or sewer capacity at the time a development is needed. Thus, the maximum intensity is ultimately determined at the preliminary development plan and/or the official development plan stages. Now moving on to the approval criteria on the right-hand portion of this slide. Generally speaking, the Comp Plan indicates support for the land uses and development intensity already shown on the land use map, because we've already planned for that specific development type to occur at the designated intensity in such areas. With a Comp Plan amendment, we are talking about the impacts of the incremental change in the existing use or planned use and the incremental change in the intensity from what currently exists on that Comp Plan map. We are not evaluating the proposed amendment to the vacant state or the underutilized state the land may be in. The approval criteria focuses on primarily the vision documents and goals of the city as it relates to uses and intensity of development. We look to whether the public purpose is further advanced and whether orderly growth is accomplished, and the answers to these are multiple professional staff judgments after consideration of the vision documents. We are concerned about the impacts to city services and traffic, but this is still at a very high level because we don't know details of the development proposal at this stage. Failure to meet any of this criteria may be grounds for denial of an application. The approval authority is City Council after consideration of a recommendation of staff, Planning Commission, and the testimony that you will hear this evening or any evening you hear our case. If a Comp Plan amendment is approved, a rezoning may be required to align the existing zoning to the new Comp Plan designation. For the purposes of this discussion, we will assume it is required. The Westminster Municipal Code requires a rezoning to planned unit development, and I'm going to refer to this as PUD from here on out, for all parcels greater than two acres, hence the predominance of this zoning designation in the city. In fact, in Westminster, over 65% of the land area is zoned PUD; 20% is open space. That leaves the remaining 15% to 12 other zoning districts. The PUD zoning designation is a tool that allows for a type of designer zoning. Through this zoning tool, the applicant is empowered to create a vision and rules for their project that are resolved in a unified design theme for the whole development. This may require flexibility from the city's typical standards, or it may even result in stricter standards as a result of community concerns, because the PUD zoning allows the city the ability to negotiate our expectations and desires as well. With the PUD zoning, the city requires a preliminary development plan, or PDP, because this is the document that creates the additional rules and/or flexibility provisions that are not listed in the Westminster Municipal Code or the other regulating documents. It may vary only a few standards; it may vary a lot. Although they are separate applications, the PUD zoning and the PDP go hand-in-hand and thus are processed concurrently. Even though a Comprehensive Plan amendment was approved, there is no guarantee a PUD or PDP will be approved until the PUD and PDP is again reviewed to its own very specific criteria. The PDP typically involves multiple parcels; it will generally establish a narrower listing of uses than the Comp Plan allows; it will describe the development theme and vision; it will show major internal street networks and primary access points; the PDP will include a refinement of the development standards, again either being more flexible or more stringent. The approval criteria requires compliance to the Comp Plan, or if there's an amended one, the amended Comp Plan. Because we know more about the proposal, we also look at compliance with planning principles, and these planning principles are embodied in our Westminster Municipal Code as well as the city's design standards and guidelines. Compatibility is a big issue evaluated, and we look at the proposed uses compared to the established uses in the area; we look at the scope and scale of development compared to adjacent properties; and we look at the ability to accommodate potential traffic impacts, again based on the information we know at this stage of the game. We also evaluate how the proposal mitigates any potential impacts to the exterior of the site, and we're also concerned about external influences to the interior of the development proposal as well. Failure to meet any of the criteria may be grounds for denial on this application. Again, City Council is the approval authority. And now the last slide. Additional approvals are required should the PUD and PDP be approved, and this is the official development plan. Even though a PDP was approved, there's no guarantee on the ODP. Again, it's reviewed to its own criteria. The ODP is the development document that provides the most details about what a project will look like. This document is reviewed for compliance with standards established in the PDP, the Westminster Municipal Code, and the other regulatory codes. In the ODP, the very specific use is now depicted. It includes all the details of the development as shown on the left portion of this slide. The approval criteria includes the exact same criteria as the PDP, plus more, given that we have more information. We will look at the relationship of structures within the development; we will evaluate the compatibility of the proposed structure to those adjacent to the site, and this does include consideration of the actual bulk of the structure and whether it provides appropriate transitions to adjacent development. We evaluate the architectural design. Our goal is to not have all structures look alike, but rather that the general characteristics of bulk, color, and material are harmonious to each other, both onsite and external to the site. We ensure that screening is provided to mitigate undesirable views, and we expect this screening to match the building design and materials. And now that the exact use is known and the exact building location is known, we can evaluate onsite circulation and offsite traffic impacts more precisely. It is at this stage that we can best evaluate the ability to provide fire and police services as well. We can look at the precise impacts to water and sewer and stormwater, and we don't actually commit water resources until a billing permit is issued. Again, failure to meet any of the criteria may be grounds for denial of an ODP. The Westminster Municipal Code does allow for administrative approval of some ODPs, while others require public hearings, although the criteria is the same for either process. After the ODP approval, the applicant may then seek approval of construction documents including the building permits. And that is the end of the process and my presentation. Both John and I are available if you have any questions.
You have any questions from council? Thank you, Ms. McConnell. All right, council, let's move on to the next item. The next item is the Citizen Communication, the five minutes or less. Thank you, ma'am. All right, let me, is there anyone who hasn't gone through the public comment period or through the public hearing process before? You all understand it perfectly? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the lead-in. All right, the piece that's coming up now is called Citizen Communication. This is a period of up to five minutes, but anyone may come forward and talk to us on any item. We are here to listen to those. All those comments you make are recorded. We have the information you've given us when you signed up, so if there's a response needed, staff will take that information on the sign-up sheet, and they will respond to you, but it will not be tonight. This is not a two-way dialogue; it's for us to listen for that five-minute period. If you are here for a public hearing, which is later on in the agenda, I know I've seen some names that are duplicated; one is on the public comment period, but I also have seen them signed up for the public hearing later on. If you are here for public comments only for that five-minute period, welcome. But if you're here to testify or provide comments on the public land use hearing later on, please wait until that time, because that's when the evidence that you present will be considered. If you do it during this five-minute period, that doesn't count. Now, excuse me. After we get through with the Citizen Communications, we'll have reports from the City Council and from the city staff. When we get to item 10A, we will conduct the city's business of items 10A through 10E and item 11A. We will then come back to item 10F, which is the public hearing for the Uplands Project, so that we can have nothing but concentration on that hearing. The process tonight, we will have a presentation from the city staff. Council will have opportunity to ask questions. All questions from either you or the public will be directed to me as the chair. When the council has had an opportunity to ask questions of staff, then a 30-minute presentation will be provided by the applicant. They get no more than 30 minutes. We will again have council have the opportunity to ask questions. Once we have gone through that, then I will open it up to public comment, and I will call you based upon the sign-up sheets that have been provided by the city clerk. Public comments during that time are limited to three minutes. There's a clock up there on the top; you'll be able to see where you're at on the three-minute period. Depending upon how many people testify and what we get through tonight will determine whether or not we're going to finish tonight. We have already set aside a period of time for tomorrow night in the event we do not finish. We desire not to be here till 1:00 in the morning. We will determine where we're at in the system at 10:30, which would be our normal end time by our procedures. If we are very close to finishing, then I will ask the council to consider a continuation of the hearing tonight. But if we're not, then I will direct the staff and stuff, and we will take a recess of the hearing, depending on where we're at, and then we will reconvene tomorrow night. If possible, we'd like to finish tonight. But it is to allow and make sure that anyone who has items that they want to bring forward has that opportunity, and you get your full time. We will review it where we're at at about 10:30, and then we'll make a decision at that point from the council. So if you get called up for public comment, but you're planning to testify on the other one, I ask you, please, just let me know that you signed up double, and I'll just mark through your name for the public comment period. I will call you up in the order that you have signed up. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor Atchison and members of council. My name is Jeremy Rodriguez. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Ed Perlmutter, and I'm here to give you guys just a brief update of what's happening in DC and here in the district. You know, I had kind of a lot to go over, but you guys have a full night ahead of you, so I'm going to skip some of it. There's a lot going on in the House this week. If anybody has any questions about what's happening, there's a lot going on with Homeland Security, some natural resources package that's going to be going through here pretty soon. But I really wanted to kind of get to what's happening here in the district. We're holding an election town hall with the Secretary of State at 5:30 February 20th, and you can look at all the details at perlmutter.gov. And we're having a resource fair, March 6th at 10:00 a.m., from 10:00 a.m. to noon, a senior resource fair, telephone town hall on March 24th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we have Academy Nomination Day coming up in April. Back to the election town hall, I wanted to let those young students out there who are 17, if they are going to be 18 by the time, by November 3rd, they are eligible to vote in the primaries. So if you have any questions about that, we can talk about that as well. Also census, there's a lot going on regarding census of how and where to go for help and information. You can contact our office, and I know the city has staff working on that as well. That's all I have for you guys today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Other than that, thank you very much for having me. Thank you.
Ms. Decker, which one are you here for?
I'm here for both.
Okay. Make your comments, anything except for the public hearing, if you would, please.
So...
You're here to talk about the Uplands Project?
Correct.
Anything you speak right now will not be considered as part of the evidence.
Okay, thank you. At the January 14th Planning Commission meeting for parcels B, D, and E, Jake was the first speaker for the Uplands development, and he was allowed to gloss over the first four criteria in the city code of land use changes and a simple dismissal statement of, quote, "one through four generally meets criteria," unquote. He did not give any specifics, and no one on the Planning Commission asked him any questions about the first four criteria. However, criteria two states, "The proposed amendment serves a substantial public purpose and will not be substantially detrimental to the surrounding lands." It will be detrimental because it destroys the scenic vistas the public enjoys, detrimental to historic agriculture that has been there for 100 years, and is detrimental to the wildlife that has used this migratory corridor for many hundreds of years. Uplands never considered anyone or anything other than themselves and their greedy profits. If Uplands were concerned about the detrimental effect on the historical agriculture of this area, they would have consulted the Colorado Agricultural Prevention Association. If Uplands had given any thought to where the wildlife may, whatsoever about the wildlife, they may have asked the Colorado Wildlife Federation for information. If Uplands were concerned about the numerous birds that use this area as a rest stop on their migrations, they could have consulted the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who administers the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, and then considered the great importance of this migratory corridor. Furthermore, Uplands never considered the public when planning to block the glorious scenic vistas of the Front Range and only have the 1.2-acre postage stamp-size parcel E as, quote, "a private park and open space," apparently only for Uplands enjoyment. If Uplands were considerate of the public hearing access, the public having access to the open scenic vistas, there are many organizations that could have contracted, such as Great Colorado Outdoors or Colorado Natural Heritage Program. On the 100th birthday of the farm, it seems horrifying. On the 100th birthday of the farm, it seems horrifying that it will be plowed up for the final time and planted for the final time with urban sprawl. Thank you.
Richard Decker.
I'm here for Upton.
Melanie Noakes.
I'm here for Uplands.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Baker.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Bruce Baker. I'll skip with the address. We're not doing that anymore. I have the received responses to the questions I've been asking about the water rates for the whole thing, and I've accepted the responses as being approved by this council, even though you didn't sign your name to it. I must first say that I was wrong in thinking that the increasing block tier structure that we use and the punitive rates were meant to encourage conservation and free up water for new users, because in your responses, you said that of 14 users in the city, 13 are residential and one is a non-residential user, and that one user uses as much water as the other 13 put together. And that one user doesn't use an increasing block tier structure. Not at all. It's only one user out of the 13 residential users that really is affected by the increasing block tier structure. And there's hardly little to gain from those few people. If you really wanted to save water and encourage conservation, you'd do something about the 7% of users in this city that use half the water. There's where your savings are to be made. So basically, council has been misled about conservation and increasing block. And this increasing block was really to give staff in this city a way to use their hatred against the residential users that need a lot of water with their large lots, like in original Westminster. And to underline that hatred, there was a statement reported in the Channel 7 news story on September 26, 2018, where a unnamed city official is said to say, "The biggest water users will now be paying their fair share." No, they're not, because they're not residential users. That's just hatred from someone on staff of this city. The Director Kirschbaum in the responses acknowledges that he misled the council about a 40% increase in the sewage in the Big Dry Creek Sewers Interceptor. That was a lie, completely misled the council. And if you give bad information, decision-makers are going to make bad decisions. The increased rates weren't called for, not at all. Really, I mean, the Director Kirschbaum in the Channel 7 news story of September 27, 2019, said that the city does not reserve money in advance for needs. That's, again, another lie, an absolute lie, because when I was on council, I actually voted for a couple increases that were more than needed on the theory that it was better to put money aside and take small steps than to wait and then take a huge step. In my last response, in the last response to the question about the cost to produce water, Director Kirschbaum says the cost to produce water for this city is $7.25 per 1,000 gallons, which is really quite odd, when all the other people around us, Denver and Brimfield and Arvada, can't really produce water for between half and two-thirds that. If I was on council, I'd be curious, because extraordinary claims need extraordinary proof. And if that's truly what it costs, there better be proof to back up those claims, or else it's another lie to mislead this council and entice you to make poor decisions. What is the most distressing part is no whistleblower on city staff came forward to tell the public of these. Not one whistleblower, not one person who said, "No, sewer reuse hasn't gone up 40%." And it's in the CFR, CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I consider working for the people of the city of Westminster to be a privilege, okay? And that privilege should not be given to people who are silent because of fear for their jobs or contempt for you people on council, or because of incompetence or laziness. It's a privilege to work for this city, okay? I ask council to revisit the water rates before the 2020 irrigation system and base them on what it truly costs us. Thank you.
Ian Pergola.
I want the next one.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, that makes everyone who has signed up for the public comment. Was there anyone that I missed that did not sign up for the public comment, not the land use hearing later? Okay, one down. And since you didn't sign up, we need your name and address.
I did sign up, but you didn't say my name.
You're not signed up, sir.
Oh, I signed up on the other sheets.
Then you're here for the public hearing later.
I'm here for both.
Okay. What's your name, for the record, because I don't have it here?
My name is Jay Liu, 8799 West Cornell Lakewood. Yeah, good evening, council members and Mayor Atchison. Big fan. Yee-haw. So today, this morning, I contacted the city staff and asking about whether, from the public comments, we can have our presentation and slideshows up there. And the answer got back to me, it was no. So I just wanted to ask why the public cannot put their slideshow on there. So the sources the staff showed me was from the Book of City Council Rules. So it said on page 10, in the public comment, it states that audio or visual presentation should not be permitted. And the staff had already checked with the attorney, because someone else asked as well, and she interprets this to include PowerPoint presentations. So my thought is, if video presentation is interpreted as visual presentation, then audio presentation should be interpreted as audible presentation. If that's the case, does that mean no people from the public are allowed to speak at the city council meetings? Please check with the city attorney and especially the council members, you guys, because if it's really, that's really how the council views this issue, then there could be potentially huge legal implications ahead for the city. City staff added that the public cannot use any video or audio recordings, nor we cannot use any city AV system for display. So my thought is, if that's the case, may I set up my own projector and the projection screen near this podium and present my PowerPoint slides without any embedded audio or video So I think, you know, a slide deck is not a video. So while the city attorney provides legal advice to the city, that person is still just a council. The paramount determination still comes from the city council. So I'm wondering, you know, this is an extremely important issue that has fundamental implications and impacts on all the past and future council meetings, and thus, the decisions made during the past or future meetings will be impacted, because if the procedure of a meeting turns out to be inappropriate, then it renders all the decisions being made at those meetings invalid. So this is my thoughts, and I don't know if it's just particular to Westminster, but all the other cities, including my home city, Lakewood, they allow, you know, the projections for every stage of, it doesn't matter if it's commission meetings or council meetings, and they don't even have the checkpoints. I mean, the city of Westminster has the checkpoints for all the meetings. It doesn't matter if it's council meeting or commission meeting, you have checkpoints there. What's the point? So I think there are a lot of things that the city of Westminster needs to, you know, pound on and think about if it's the right way to do it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last chance for public comments. Anyone have anything else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a report of city officials. Mr. Tripp. All right. Members of council, any comments? Ms. Seitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. It is nice to see so many residents willing to come and advocate for what they think is the best direction for the city. With a roomful of civically-minded people, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you about an opportunity to expand your leadership in the region. There is a Dr. Cog, a citizen academy, that is currently accepting applications. So this is a great opportunity for emerging leaders, people who want to learn more about regional issues here in Colorado and enhance their leadership capacity, learn more about planning both on transportation and on land use. The deadline is March 6th. To apply, you would go to drcog.org. So just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of it. I also feel compelled to very quickly address some statements that were made. I have to agree with Councilor Baker on one item and one item only, which is that it is an absolute privilege to serve the city of Westminster. And I will say that it has been my experience that the professionals that I encounter with take that privilege very seriously and are committed to providing a high level of service to all community members. I have never encountered a time, even when I've disagreed with an opinion, that I felt that I was lied or misled. So I appreciate everyone coming here. I think reasonable people can disagree. It doesn't have to turn into accusations and name-calling, and so I just felt I needed to speak up to that. So thank you.
Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll make this short and sweet, but I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and being heard and expressing your opinions and your voices. This is what we do in our country. It's what makes us great, so thank you. Along that note, another thing that we do in our country is we vote. So I wanted to encourage everyone to make sure you're registered to vote, especially if you are 17 and going to be 18 by November 3rd, as I know many teenagers are right now, because I have a senior, a daughter who's a senior, and I also am working to encourage her to vote. So please, get the voice out. Let's vote. Let's show the world what we really are here in America. Thank you.
Other comments from council? Ms. Seitz asked me to define, "Dr. Cog is not a human being." Dr. Cog is an organization that's called the Denver Regional Council of Governments, which is made up of the 58 elected bodies in the eight-county metro area, but people have gotten so used to the acronym, Dr. Cog, that we forget not everybody may understand what that means. All right, any other comments from council? Moving on, we'll move on to the next item is consent agenda. We have no items on the consent agenda tonight. We have no appointments and resignations. Moving on to item 10A, this is a move for an engineering services contract with HDR. Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to authorize the city manager to execute an engineering services, non-construction contract with HDR Engineering in the amount of $600,000 to complete the tasks associated with the development of a Federal Boulevard multimodal transportation study.
Mr. Vols.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from council? Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. One of my questions that I had asked in the pre-meeting was the duration of the project, but one of the questions that sparked in my mind was, is there any way that we could extend this, meaning that, why are we doing it now as opposed to a year from now, two years from now, when we have more of our developments that are already in the process? I'm just curious as to why we're starting it right now.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Deborah Baskett, Senior Transportation Planner. Thank you for your question, Councilor Smith. The urgency with beginning this study has a lot to do with safety. It's one of the highest quarters where we have pedestrian deaths and injuries, and really the momentum to do this has been gaining for a couple of years now. So I think we have a great opportunity with our partners in Adams County and Federal Heights to learn what the community's needs are and to begin to put things into motion.
Mr. Demont.
You might want to hang on. You also alluded in the pre-meeting when some questions came up about the proposed development tonight, as well as recently the St. Mark was. You said you kind of, I'm hoping you could expand upon that as far as, so if, you know, future things get developed, and this is a question we ask often as we're redoing our comp plan and new things come in. How are we anticipating that growth? And will it be anticipated as part of, or looked at as part of, this study, specifically one of the past ones that we sat through with St. Marks? And there was a lot of questions and comments as far as not being able to do a left turn when you're traveling, I think, northbound into that development. And I think that was a big point of contention and frankly, the reason I voted against it. So I am very curious for you to expand upon how that might play into this and how this might benefit some of those problems on federal.
I appreciate the question as to the specific improvements that might emerge from this once we have a community vision that's supported by council. So what we anticipate is looking at some of the key intersections where we know there are issues currently, whether they're volume or turn movements, working in partnership with the Department of Transportation, as well as RTD, as they provide very frequent bus service there. So we will be taking that into account. We will do modeling that says what's out there today, what's projected in the next five and 10 years, and then what ultimately could happen according to the comp plan. But the kind of improvements that we'll be putting forward will be overview recommendations for what the corridor could look like as a whole to move people, but then specific improvements controlled by the local jurisdictions in partnership with CDOT to say, what would you do at a particular intersection? Would you make it a closer crosswalk so people don't have to walk us for? Would you make a public investment in partnership with others to put in better lighting? So I think that there's some short-term things that council will be able to weigh on before any money is appropriated for that, to say what's in the best interest of the community in the near and long term.
That's great. And one last piece of that that I'm curious about, one of the big things that came out of the St. Marks was trying to get the willingness of CDOT to help us or our other partners to help us. Specifically in that one, it was CDOT. So I'm curious, I know in the pre-meeting you had said that their participation was to be a partner in this, not monetarily at this point. Do we feel that approving this will give us extra weight to getting them to come to the table when it comes to things like the left turn near St. Marks?
Well, that's certainly the hope. There's so many different levels of CDOT that engage. The folks that review the development plans may not be as involved in the long-term planning and these kinds of agreements to move forward in partnership and to budget in the near term. So we would hope that we move the ball forward together with them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Vols.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to confirm, this is $600,000, not 6,000, right? Well, yeah. It was misspoken. Okay, so I just want to correct the record there. So, and then I have one quick question or one comment. I plan on supporting this. This is a partnership. The whole 6,000 is not on our 600,000, it's not on us. This is a partnership with Adams County, Federal Heights, and us. So it seems like we have to have this kind of partnerships to be successful to get ourselves where we need to be in transportation. Can you speak a little bit about that?
Well, what I hope you'll see in the future reports is, if you don't have it committed to memory, how the jurisdictional boundaries overlap between Westminster and Adams County and Federal Heights. There, I mentioned to council earlier that there's a question of through traffic, people traveling through the corridor from 120th all the way to 52nd. So 120th is the Adams County border with Brimfield, and then the other limit of the study, it's eight miles, and that is with Adams County and Denver's border. There's a lot going on there in terms of people trying to get to jobs, to food, to education. So I don't think we could do it alone in this case.
Ms. Seitz.
Two points. First, I wanted to offer a friendly amendment to change the motion to state 600,000 versus the 6,000, if you'll accept. And then my second point is, I do think that this is a really good plan, not only because of the regional collaboration that Councilor Vols already commented on, but because it does leverage existing plans that are adjacent in Denver that has already done a study on their portion of the federal corridor. And then also, I happened to attend an RTD meeting where I did see that this quarter... And then also, I happened to attend an RTD meeting where I did see that this corridor has tested very favorably for bus rapid transit. So when you have layered planning opportunities, I think that it makes a lot of sense to take advantage of those synergies. So I am excited to vote in favor.
All right, before I go down to other comments, we do have an offer of an amendment to correct the $6,000 to $600,000, if the maker is acceptable of that.
I accept.
Mr. Vols is a second. Are you okay with it?
Yeah, I accept.
Okay, so minimum is accepted. Ms. Smith, I'm back to you now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the effort of transparency, I do work for RTD. That being said, I don't feel like this would need, I would need to recuse myself because it is city-driven and municipality, shared with municipalities, Federal Heights and Adams County and Westminster. And I do believe that this is an important study because of the safe, mainly the safety aspect that you had mentioned in my first question. So I will be supportive of this. I do also, I would like to direct staff to not consider this as a one-time option as far as looking at it, when we do have more progress as far as development on both sides, federal, right, to take another closer look at how we're impacting those areas. Thank you.
And I agree with your comments, Ms. Smith. I don't believe that there's any way that there's a conflict of interest for your participation request of where you worked, doesn't have anything to do with this. All right, council, any other comments on 10A? If not, please vote with your buttons. And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item was item 10B. This is a contract for amendment for ecological services, resources consultants. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Ecological Resource Consultants, Inc. for engineering services for the change of use of farmer's reservoir and irrigation company water rights.
Mr. Vols?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from council? Being none, this is also a vote with your lights, please. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item up is item 10C. And this is a purchase of materials from Hatch Company based upon a recommendation to the city manager. And this is item 10C. Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest will best be served by authorizing a negotiated purchase of products and supplies from a sole-source provider Hatch Company in the amount not to exceed $250,000 in 2020 to replace worn-out and obsolete water quality analysis instruments and to maintain all Hatch Company instrument networks throughout the Department of Public Works and Utilities.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion by council? Being none, this is a vote with your lights, please. And the motion also carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item is item D1. This is an authorization of treatment chemicals. Ms. Seitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize staff to proceed with the 2020 calendar year purchases of water treatment chemicals through multiple assembly of procurement officials' bids from PVS Technologies in an amount not to exceed $417,956 for ferric chloride, Thatcher Chemical Company in the amount not to exceed $250,656, for ACH and sodium hypochlorite, and DPC Industries in the amount not to exceed $190,335 for caustic soda and Aqua ammonia.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments by council? I have a motion and a second. Being none, vote with your lights, please. And the motion carries on 7-0. Ms. Seitz, would you take care of D2, please?
Yes. I move that based on the recommendation of the city manager, find that the public interest will best be served by authorizing negotiated purchases from the sole-source providers as follows. Mississippi Lime Company in an amount not to exceed $187,200 for lime, DPC Industries for sodium hypochlorite in the amount not to exceed $301,509.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments by council on this item? Being none, ladies and gentlemen, a vote with your lights, please. And the motion carries on 7-0. Ms. Seitz, would you finish item D?
I move to allow the purchase of these water treatment chemicals from other sources should the specific vendor listed for each chemical be unable to deliver its specialty product. The total authorized amount of the above water treatment chemical purchases is not to exceed $1347,656 in 2020.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments by council? Being none, this is also a vote with your lights, please. And this motion also carries on a 7-0. Next item up is item 10E. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based upon the recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest is best served by authorizing a negotiated purchase from sole-source provider Badger Meter Incorporated for the annual water meter replacement transponders, chambers, and other miscellaneous meter parts in the amount not to exceed $350,000 for the calendar year of 2020.
Ms. Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments by council? Being none, you're voting with your light, please. This motion also carries 7-0. Ladies and council, I would ask you now to refer to item 11A. This is our council's bill number two. Ms. Seitz?
Thank you. I move to pass Counselors Bill number two on second reading, authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement with Downtown Westminster Residences LLC in substantially the same form as attached for the development of at least forty condominiums on a portion of Lot 2, Block A1, thirty-four townhomes on a portion of Block A4, thirty-four townhomes on a Block A7, a future option to construct additional condominiums on a portion of Lot 2, Block A1, and a future option to construct townhomes on up to one-acre block of C6.
Mr. Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion by council on second reading of Counselors Bill number two? Mr. Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say how important I think this project is, and I plan to support this tonight for a few really important reasons. First of all, this will bring a private investment into this downtown area to the tune of $42 million. I think that's important. And also, when the project, or if it is approved, that would be fees and taxes back to the city after the rebates that we had already voted on for $2.2 million. So I think that is very important. We need that diversity of housing. We don't have condominiums, and I have a lot of neighbors, the people come up to me throughout this project and say, we need condominiums. I don't want the big house with all the maintenance. I want to downsize to a condominium. We don't offer that in this city. We haven't built that in fifteen to twenty years. So I'm going to be supporting this tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting no, and I just want to, we obviously have covered this once before, but part of the reason is not the need, that I've heard the same things. Condominiums are important. Townhomes are an important part of the downtown, and that being a viable option for the city moving it forward. What I don't agree with is the way that this has been structured and some of the monies that we're having to rebate. And I understand that those monies wouldn't exist if not but for this development, but it would also not be needed to collect those fees, I would hope, if this development didn't happen. So I feel that the city is in a place where we're going to develop, that it needs to stand on its own and not be propped up by the people's taxpayers' money. So I will be voting no.
Mr. Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one additional thing. This project is unique in the fact that we may be rebating upfront, but the backend is, we will get 50% of the profit. Once these are built and sold, they will share 50% of that profit with the city. I think that's a good deal, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Other comments by council? Being none. Ms. Parker, this is a roll of call votes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
No.
Mayor Protem Seitz?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
No.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
And the motion passes on a 4-3 vote. All right, now, ladies and gentlemen, it's about eight o'clock. I doubt if any of you went to work before nine this morning, didn't get up and go do anything, but some of us have been doing some of this since early this morning. Before we start into this item, I'm going to give the council a short bio break. We'll be back in about five minutes. If you need to, ladies and gentlemen, restrooms are diagonally out the door across the hall. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if everyone could take their seats, please. All right, the next item up on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the application for Uplands. Ms. McConnell, with staff, will go ahead and start, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. Rita McConnell, Planning Manager. Let's try this again. How's that? Is that loud? Can you guys hear me?
No.
How about this? Hang on. How about now?
Oh.
Now?
Yes.
Let's try it one more time. There?
He's in the microphone.
I'm practically kissing it.
In the back of the room, can you hear what she's saying?
Can you hear me?
All right, there is still, if you can turn it up one more notch.
Can you hear me? Okay, let's try this. How's that?
Better.
Okay, all right, I will not move. I will focus right here. Okay, do we have the PowerPoint up? Because I can't see it.
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll begin. I just wanted to provide a few comments in advance to frame the conversation. A lot of the members of the public were at Planning Commission meeting, and I'll be making some of those same comments as well, as what I did there. There's been a lot of information about the Uplands development that has been provided to the public the past several months. There's been numerous neighborhood meetings conducted by the applicant. The project has been discussed on multiple social media platforms. There have been newspaper articles in the Denver Post, and there have been local televised news stories. Many details of the proposed project that have been presented at these meetings are not part of the application that will be presented before City Council this evening. The applicant does intend on providing details about their vision tonight that covers parcels not covered in the Comp Plan Amendment, but that is to provide context to their actual application before you. In order to avoid confusion on what is being evaluated, I would like to take a few moments to further this discussion. It is important to keep the focus on the specific criteria. In the back of the room is criteria, and I'm asking that who has not picked that up, raise your hand, and a staff member will provide it to you. Should council approve this application this evening, there will be future public hearings to discuss all the other details that have been presented to the public that aren't relevant tonight. Tonight, we're talking about the Comp Plan Amendment for Parcels B, D, and E, as shown on this slide highlighted in red. The topics covered at this stage are the use of the parcel and the density of the development. Your council packet includes many comments from interested parties that are desiring open space and farmland preservation for Parcel A. Parcel A and Parcel C are anticipated to be included in the preliminary development plan and will be brought before City Council at a later date should the comprehensive plan amendment be approved. Discussion about these two parcels should wait until that time. City staff and Planning Commission have reviewed the amendment request to very specific criteria, and council will now be doing the same thing this evening. The most effective method for public testimony tonight will be for those who speak to address the three parcels, B, D, and E, that are the subject of the hearing tonight, and tie those concerns to the criteria. This will aid City Council in your deliberations. Additional approvals are required should the Comp Plan Amendment be approved. The next stage in the development review process is for an annexation. This is the yellow parcel depicted on this slide, a rezoning to planned unit development for all the parcels bounded in red on the slide, as well as a preliminary development plan. Should the PDP get approved, the ODP is the next development plan required. Each of the parcels shown on this slide may have their own separate ODP, as shown by the different colored property boundaries, or they may have a master ODP that covers all the parcels, much like the PDP. The ODP for these properties may require public hearings as well. Now, I'm going to pass the presentation to Mr. Jacob Casa.
Sorry, let me start again. Good evening, Councilors. My name is Jacob Casa. I am a planner with the city's Planning Division. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and the public notices mailed, posted, and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The posted notices exceeded the minimum quantity in period of posting required. I would also like to introduce into the public record this list of additional citizen comments received as of February 10, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. This copy was provided to you at the pre-meeting, so you should all have a copy of that, and there are two more copies sitting on the back table for the audience if they would like to read them as well. The applicant has also printed one of the attachments. They would like to share with you a paper copy of their attachment that's part of their application. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 252 property owners and HOAs within 500 feet of the parcels under consideration tonight. The city also translated the mailed notice to Spanish and provided both an English and Spanish version of the notice. Beyond their required notice, additional notice was emailed to over 250 contacts from the developers' public outreach efforts. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website, the city's newsletter, Facebook, Twitter, and other social media. Here is a map of the overall proposed Uplands development. The parcels are labeled with a bold black letter. Shown in bold red lines are Parcell B, a portion of Parcel D, and Parcel E, which are under consideration tonight. Here is a simple chart showing the current designations versus the proposed designations. For Parcel B, the proposal would increase the maximum amount of units allowed to 135. For Parcel D, the proposal would remove any future office uses and would allow up to 156 units. For Parcel E, the proposal would remove any office uses and limit the development to active or passive recreational uses. Section 11-5-21 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing amendments to the land use plan. Staff finds that the comprehensive plan amendments generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Staff is not giving a broad analysis of the comprehensive plan criteria in the presentation. We made that analysis in the agenda memo, and I would refer you back to the agenda memo for staff's analysis and opinion on the application. The first four criteria are that the amendment is consistent with the vision, intent, and policies of the comprehensive plan, that the amendment serves a substantial public purpose, will consider impacts on neighboring lands, and that the amendment is necessary to address changed conditions. The proposed amendments are consistent with several goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and staff finds that the proposed land use designations will not be substantially detrimental to surrounding lands. Criteria five through seven consider that the amendment provide for the orderly physical growth of the city, for there's an important public policy, and that the amendment is appropriate in order to address a unique size, shape, or characteristic of the property. The proposed amendments do provide for the orderly physical growth of the city and could help facilitate an infill development on parcels that have some infrastructure in place to serve future development. The final three criteria consider that the amendment will not negatively impact infrastructure and city services, that the amendment will not negatively impact referral agencies, and that the amendment establishes minimal environmental impacts. As addressed in the agenda memo, the proposed designations will create some impacts to city services. These impacts will need to be further mitigated by improvements to the infrastructure as identified in subsequent PDP and ODP reviews. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed comprehensive plan amendments on January 14. The Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend that the City Council approve the proposed amendments with the finding that they generally meet the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed comprehensive plan amendments, and that the City Council approve the proposed amendments with the finding that they generally meet the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Staff believes that these proposed amendments could further the City Council's strategic plan goal on recreation listed under beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention. There are several staff members with us this evening, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor, are there any questions of staff at this time? Ms. Thang?
I have multiple questions, but I think I would prefer to allow the applicant to do their presentation in the event that they answer their questions at that time, and to be respectful of everyone's time in the room.
Is the applicant just present? Come on down. And sir, just a reminder, you have 30 minutes' time. The city clerk will let you know two things, one when you hit five minutes and one when you hit one minute.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Handlin. My address is 9033 East Easter Place, and that's in Centennial, Colorado. Again, I'm Jeff Handlin. I'm part of the Uplands team. I'm here with the rest of my team, both internal partners and our external counsel, planners, engineers, et cetera. We are here to answer your questions, so please, after our presentation and after comment, feel free. I'm originally from Quinter, Kansas, which is about four hours from here. It's a thousand-person wheat-farming town in western Kansas. I've lived in Colorado now for quite a while, but over the course of my life, I've lived in about every type of house imaginable, from a trailer to an attic, an apartment to a single-family home. I've lived in tiny little towns, and I've lived in big cities. And those experiences led me to have a desire to create special places, frankly. We have a saying internally that we create capital-C communities. And what that really means is that we're people, and those are communities where people know and interact with each other. I learned about capital-C communities in my hometown, where my father and mother and everybody else worked 12-hour days, but then volunteered in a number of roles for their towns so that we had a lot of things to compete with other bigger towns. And that's exactly how we feel our role is when we develop communities. Fast forward 20 years, and many capital-C communities later, 20 years from Quinter at least, and in 2013, we owned and operated a community near Westminster's border with Broomfield called Anthem. And while the community was and is incredibly successful in its stated mission to provide executive housing to all those jobs on the 36th corridor, we started noticing a few alarming trends. First, home prices were increasing rapidly. In 2011, when we purchased Anthem, you could buy a new home in there about $400,000. Today, that same new home will cost you about $800,000. Second, in the northern areas of Westminster and Broomfield, sorely needed schools and grocery stores were opening, finally. However, in the historic areas of both of those cities, schools were closing and grocery stores were closing. We wanted to know more, so we dug in deep. I also serve, in my fifth year now, as an adjunct professor for the University of Denver, teaching community development. We have some resources, so we hired some third-party data firms and found out that, first, Westminster had experienced robust job growth over the last 40 years, yet permitting of new homes, including apartments, had just not kept pace with all the new employees and new households. Second, we looked at how it compared to other northwest metro municipalities. This is a chart that shows all of them over the last 10 years that we have data for, '08 through '17. That line right there is the 1% Lakewood growth cap recently enacted. You can see that Westminster, over the 10 years, was about a third of that growth cap, and over a 40-year period, was tied for second-least in the corridor, second only to Boulder on producing the least amount of housing. The second thing we'd noticed was that although new home, new jobs were in the area, we didn't see a corresponding effort on apartments even. There is an axiom, an unrelenting truth in economics. It's right there in front of you. New jobs equals new households equals new homes. But my mentor put it much simpler, and that was, homes are where jobs go to spend the night. We noticed that, in particular, when we had conversations with local employers, their biggest concern was their employees could not find housing. Now, jobs and household growth have already occurred in this corridor. They drive by, those jobs drive by the site every morning, and they drive home again every night, but they don't live in Westminster. They're driving to other places, and where they drive, they put their kids in school and they shop in grocery stores. And that has become a real problem for, the question is, all these new jobs that have been created by the city and its very active economic development department, where are those jobs going to go spend the night? On this graphic, we tracked every single residential unit built in the city and its surroundings, and the blue shows every unit built before 1990, and the orange shows every unit built after 1990. Young families, empty nesters, and a lot of other types of folks had very few housing options in historic Westminster over the last few decades. Now, in addition to the pace of housing not keeping up with the pace of employment, the mix of housing changed dramatically over the last few decades. Most homes built in the area were either large suburban executive homes, like those in Anthem and others, or large-scale apartment buildings. And everything in between, townhomes, smaller detached homes, duplexes, cottages, bungalows, they were all missing. And why does that matter? It's because those types of diverse housing choices are really important. One, their size and design, what we call attainable by design, are suited for young families, empty nesters, and seniors, exactly the type of folks that are struggling to find housing in your city according to the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment. Two, they generate enough density to support really important public transit, keeping vehicles off the road. And three, because of their walkable nature, they support local businesses that you could walk to. The great news is, is that Uplands is already land use-approved for exactly this type of housing, and it has a bus stop with a new commuter rail five minutes away. Uplands, people ask me a lot, what is Uplands? What will Uplands be? And I always respond with trying to choose my words carefully. Uplands will be a walkable, connected community of attainable front porch neighborhoods on tree-lined streets, and those streets are going to be easily walkable to local shops and cafes and great public spaces. It's a community that is sustainably designed, promoting a responsible water use, and leverages the city's investment in commuter rail via our onsite transit hub, lessening vehicle dependency. I'm super proud of the capital-C communities that we've developed in this state, and I'm super proud to present to you our vision for the Uplands. If you'll just pause for one moment, I think we have a video for you. Thank you.
do provide for the orderly physical growth of the city and could help facilitate an infill development on parcels that have some infrastructure in place to serve future development. The final three criteria consider that the amendment will not negatively impact infrastructure and city services, that the amendment will not negatively impact referral agencies, and that the amendment establishes minimal environmental impacts. As addressed in the agenda memo, the proposed designations will create some impacts to city services. These impacts will need to be further mitigated by improvements to the infrastructure as identified in subsequent PDP and ODP reviews. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed comprehensive plan amendments on January 14th. The Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments with the finding that they generally meet the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed comprehensive plan amendments and that the city council approve the proposed amendments with the finding that they generally meet the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Staff believes that these proposed amendments could further the city council's strategic plan goal on recreation listed under beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention. There are several staff members with us this evening, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor, are there any questions of staff at this time? Ms. Thang?
I have multiple questions, but I think I would prefer to allow the applicant to do their presentation in the event that they answer their questions at that time and to be respectful of everyone's time in the room.
Is the applicant just present? Come on down. And sir, just a reminder, you will have 30 minutes time. The city clerk will let you know two things, one when you hit five minutes and one when you hit one minute.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Handlin. My address is 9033 East Easter Place, and that's in Centennial, Colorado. Again, I'm Jeff Handlin. I'm part of the Uplands team. I'm here with the rest of my team, both internal partners and our external council, planners, engineers, et cetera. We are here to answer your questions, so please, after our presentation and after comment, feel free. I'm originally from Quinter, Kansas, which is about four hours from here. It's a thousand-person wheat-farming town in western Kansas. I've lived in Colorado now for quite a while, but over the course of my life, I've lived in about every type of house imaginable, from a trailer to an attic, an apartment to a single-family home. I've lived in tiny little towns and I've lived in big cities. And those experiences led me to have a desire to create special places, frankly. We have a saying internally that we create capital-C communities. And what that really means is that where people, those are communities where people know and interact with each other. I learned about capital-C communities in my hometown, where my father and mother and everybody else worked 12-hour days, but then volunteered in a number of roles for their towns so that we had a lot of things to compete with other bigger towns. And that's exactly how we feel our role is when we develop communities. Fast forward 20 years, and many capital-C communities later, 20 years from Quinter at least, and in 2013, we owned and operated a community near Westminster's border with Broomfield called Anthem. And while the community was and is incredibly successful in its stated mission to provide executive housing to all those jobs on the 36th corridor, we started noticing a few alarming trends. First, home prices were increasing rapidly. In 2011, when we purchased Anthem, you could buy a new home in there about $400,000. Today, that same new home will cost you about $800,000. Second, in the northern areas of Westminster and Broomfield, sorely needed schools and grocery stores were opening, finally. However, in the historic areas of both of those cities, schools were closing and grocery stores were closing. We wanted to know more, so we dug in deep. I also serve, in my fifth year now, as an adjunct professor for the University of Denver, teaching community development. We have some resources, so we hired some third-party data firms and found out that, first, Westminster had experienced robust job growth over the last 40 years, yet permitting of new homes, including apartments, had just not kept pace with all the new employees and new households. Second, we looked at how it compared to other northwest metro municipalities. This is a chart that shows all of them over the last 10 years that we have data for, '08 through '17. That line right there is the 1% Lakewood growth cap recently enacted. You can see that Westminster, over the 10 years, was about a third of that growth cap, and over a 40-year period, was tied for second-least in the corridor, second only to Boulder on producing the least amount of housing. The second thing we'd noticed was that although new home, new jobs were in the area, we didn't see a corresponding effort on apartments even. There is an axiom, an unrelenting truth in economics. It's right there in front of you. New jobs equals new households equals new homes. But my mentor put it much simpler, and that was, homes are where jobs go to spend the night. We noticed that, in particular, when we had conversations with local employers, their biggest concern was their employees could not find housing. Now, jobs and household growth have already occurred in this corridor. They drive by, those jobs drive by the site every morning, and they drive home again every night, but they don't live in Westminster. They're driving to other places, and where they drive, they put their kids in school and they shop in grocery stores. And that has become a real problem for, the question is, all these new jobs that have been created by the city and its very active economic development department, where are those jobs going to go spend the night? On this graphic, we tracked every single residential unit built in the city and its surroundings. And the blue shows every unit built before 1990, and the orange shows every unit built after 1990. Young families, empty nesters, and a lot of other types of folks had very few housing options in historic Westminster over the last few decades. Now, in addition to the pace of housing not keeping up with the pace of employment, the mix of housing changed dramatically over the last few decades. Most homes built in the area were either large suburban executive homes, like those in Anthem and others, or large-scale apartment buildings. And everything in between, townhomes, smaller detached homes, duplexes, cottages, bungalows, they were all missing. And why does that matter? It's because those types of diverse housing choices are really important. One, their size and design, what we call attainable by design, are suited for young families, empty nesters, and seniors, exactly the type of folks that are struggling to find housing in your city according to the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment. Two, they generate enough density to support really important public transit, keeping vehicles off the road. And three, because of their walkable nature, they support local businesses that you could walk to. The great news is, is that Uplands is already land use approved for exactly this type of housing, and it has a bus stop with a new commuter rail five minutes away. Uplands, people ask me a lot, what is Uplands? What will Uplands be? And I always respond with trying to choose my words carefully. Uplands will be a walkable, connected community of attainable front porch neighborhoods on tree-lined streets. And those streets are going to be easily walkable, the local shops and cafes and great public spaces. It's a community that is sustainably designed, promoting a responsible water use, and leverages the city's investment in commuter rail via our onsite transit hub lessening vehicle dependency. I'm super proud of the capital-C communities that we've developed in this state, and I'm super proud to present to you our vision for the Uplands. If you'll just pause for one moment, I think we have a video for you. Thank you.
A lot of the people, very close-knit neighbors, take care of each other, which is just a little piece of small town in a great big city. A lot of the people, very close-knit neighbors, take care of each other, which is just a little piece of small town in a great big city.
I love living in Westminster. I love my neighborhood and the community of support that I have there.
I moved from Seattle, Washington, seven and a half years ago, and my family and I moved to Westminster. We love the community, that's why we came here.
Yo comenzé hace años ahí en ese negocio. Muy pequeño mi negocio, muy poca gente. Siempre pensando en algo en ese lugar para beneficio mío.
There's sort of this term we've been using, the "missing middle," and really what that describes is a housing type that's sort of moderate in price and also moderate in size. What we find missing is first-time homebuyers and also people moving down.
We need to house people. We need to be smart about it. We need to have diversity of housing so that people will come to Westminster, live in Westminster, and stay in Westminster. The connectivity between parks isn't necessarily there. You have to get in your car and you have to go to this destination to be able to enjoy it.
Having additional retail, places to dine, places to get coffee would be huge.
Need to get more bedrooms around our area. When that happens, it'll start helping revitalizeing Federal.
You have this giant parcel that has farmland that's private now, so, you know, you can't go there, you can't walk your dogs there, you can't do anything there.
This is the most exciting project I've worked on.
It probably looks a little bit more like a traditional neighborhood that you might see in historic Denver. It's intimate, it's small. When porches and sidewalks and other walkable connectivity connects people, they know each other. It's also, by design, has smaller homes. They use less water, less power, and require less maintenance. A little bit more about living and knowing your neighbors than having a big house.
Having younger families move into the community, a lot of people would bring their kids and have their home and their school within blocks of one another.
It would be fantastic to have opportunities for our staff to have housing nearby and be part of the community.
I'm really excited because I believe that a healthy living, that integration of activity and wellness and finding ways to do things within the community in which we live, I believe the Uplands community will provide that.
I think a diversity of housing is really important for the vitality of the city, also economic diversity as well.
Eso me ayudaría bastante a mí que la gente pudiera caminar a mi negocio.
As it gets built out, it becomes this place, and people say, "Well, where do you live?" I live in Wash Park. I live in Uplands. You know, that's the kind of neighborhood identity that I think is really important.
It's providing a place for people to have a community where they can interact, where they can meet their neighbors, and just have a really great place to live.
I like that you're pulling people in to give their opinion.
As a resident of Westminster, I'm really excited that so much thought and care in the planning and development of this community has already taken place.
This corridor has the potential to become a great success story in Westminster.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Nijelik. I'm a principal at Norris Design located at 1101 Bannock Street in Denver. We are a planning and landscape architecture firm with 35 years of experience creating vibrant, healthy communities in the Denver metro area and beyond. We've had the true privilege of helping shape many of the great spaces where Westminster lives, works, and plays in today. To help create this vision for Uplands, we studied the city's many planning documents, met with neighborhood institutions, residents, and stakeholders, and came up with four guiding principles to help us build this new community. First, orient to you, north is on the right side of the slide, US 36 is the diagonal yellow line, and Uplands is highlighted in orange. The first guiding principle is connect to Westminster. The existing bike and pedestrian network needs improvement to meet the connectivity goals of the city. We need to prioritize how to get existing and future residents to the existing schools, parks, and commercial centers, including downtown Westminster and the existing bus and rail transit opportunities. Our second guiding principle is to share the views. Today, the site is private property, and the views are primarily enjoyed by a small number of adjacent property owners. The general public has a 30 mile per hour windshield view as they drive past the site. The overall community will have full access to this signature summit for the first time in more than 100 years. The best views will be preserved, and the public's interaction with these views will be enhanced with an extensive public parks and open space network. This includes the historic castle. The church will retain the campus and its architectural treasures. They will continue to operate the campus as they have since 1920. The third guiding principle is gather together. Through preserving these views, we can create places for existing and future residents to gather together in public parks, trails, local shops, and restaurants. And finally, create a home. We can help fulfill many of the city's housing needs, which are further identified in the city's 2017 Housing Needs Assessment. To create this vision, we look forward to an extensive process with city staff, our neighbors, key stakeholders, and all of you. Tonight, we are requesting the first step in the city process, which is the land use plan amendments for three of the five parcels that make up Uplands, just Parcels B, the western portion of D, and Parcel E. We will be back in front of you in the future for the annexation, zoning, and preliminary development plan, which will include neighborhood meetings, city review, and additional public hearings. This will occur over the next several months. This will be followed by official development plans as we develop this neighborhood-level site plans with timing dependent on market demands and in lockstep with the city's water supply. We anticipate build-out of the Uplands community will occur over the next 15 to 20 years. You have a great process with numerous opportunities in the future to comment on specific development plans and the many details that are a part of each step. We trust your process. Here are the five land parcels that make up Uplands. Again, north is on the right, and the Uplands parcels are in orange. Approximately 80% of the overall land area has existing comp plan land use designations that support and encourage the vision we've discussed. Parcels A, C, and D, shown in blue, are not a part of today's public hearing. They have existing land use designations that are further supported by the draft Westminster Forward documents and the citywide public outreach completed as a part of that process. Westminster Forward notes the importance of multimodal connections, attainable housing opportunities, and slightly higher-density home types. We are requesting your approval to change the land use designation for three parcels part of this community. These parcels, shown here in orange, need updates to be consistent with the recent city plans, promote orderly physical growth, and support the city's vision. These requests are supported by MetroVision 2035 Plan, which promotes smaller lot sizes and the use of overlooked vacant land parcels for infill development to help absorb population growth and use existing infrastructure more efficiently. City staff and our team have provided written materials explaining how the approval criteria have been met. For the sake of brevity, we will be hitting the highlights, but our team is here to answer any questions on these approval criteria. The city's vision, as quoted from the 2019 Strategic Plan, encourages a well-connected city with diverse integrated housing options and a spectrum of job and retail options. First, we have Parcel B, generally located at the southwest corner of 84th and Lowell. Circled here in red, we're requesting an amendment from R3.5 to R5. These two pages are pulled from your comp plan and show the change from R3.5 to R5. This maintains the intention of providing single-family residences, but R5 allows for additional home types such as patio homes. It also removes the large minimum lot size, furthering our collective goal of responsible water use. This proposed amendment provides for increased housing diversity. It provides a density transition between existing land use designations and creates opportunities to cluster housing while providing meaningful public land dedication and preserving view corridors. Next, we have a 20-acre parcel at the southeast corner of 84th and Federal. Again, circled here in red, we're requesting an amendment from office to R8. As noted in the staff report, this parcel is not well-positioned for office and is not noted as an employment center within the Comprehensive Plan. However, the parcel to the north is noted as a redevelopment area. The addition of residential uses in this location can help create a land use synergy between these parcels. This amendment also increases housing diversity and helps balance the housing mix within the city by creating additional land areas that could accommodate a range of incomes, age groups, and lifestyle choices to diversify from R3.5, which is the majority of the city's residential land. And finally, we have a 1.2-acre parcel generally located at the southwest corner of 88th and Zuni. Again, circled here in red, we're requesting an amendment from office to parks and open space. This parcel is isolated, encumbered by easements, and has no current road access, creating a challenge to develop a successful office building. As noted in the staff report, this change has a negligible impact on the office goals in the neighborhood and supports the preservation of open space. In reviewing tonight's application, you are required to apply the 10 approval criteria found in Section 11 of the Westminster Municipal Code, which are listed here. These proposed changes are not requesting a change from agricultural to residential. These parcels have existing land use designations of R3.5 and office. Our request is to change Parcel B from R3.5 to R5, to change the western portion of Parcel D from office to R8, and to change Parcel E from office to parks and open space. And with that, we have one last speaker to wrap up our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Marcus Pockner. I am the Community Outreach Specialist and Consultant for Uplands. I facilitate community outreach in master plan and infill communities across the metro area, including Lowry for the last 15 years. We specialize in neighborhood outreach utilizing engagement to foster neighborhood-based planning. I am the final speaker, as Bonnie just mentioned, and I will diligently work through our remaining slides. The most important objective for Uplands was to first listen to our surrounding neighbors. We started by walking and holding introductory meetings. We heard neighborhood comments, integrated those planning concepts, and then started to draw. We have employed a concentric outreach philosophy. We look to work most closely with the nearest neighbors and stakeholders. We structured our outreach to work first with our neighbors, then to our community participants, and then finally to regional stakeholders. We have held over 51 community meetings to date to help shape the comp plan amendments that are before you this evening, including 36 neighborhood meetings. These have ranged from coffee table meetings to large open house gatherings. We have knocked and flyered over 2,600 doors. In listening to these stakeholders, we heard suggestions on how to improve our plan. We have integrated these planning suggestions, and now they are neighborhood opportunities, opportunities that are also consistent with your comp plan and the approval criteria for your amendments this evening. Our first opportunity is to provide enhanced connectivity. With development, improvements will be made to the surrounding street frontages and implement the city's mobility goals. These improvements will mitigate additional traffic generation and typically improve the through and intersection levels of service. As a specific example, a key piece for better connectivity will be changing the existing sidewalk conditions. Much of the sidewalk network surrounding Uplands is either undersized or completely missing, as shown in this slide. Enhanced connectivity will properly knit the community back together. Opportunity number two is for parks, open space, and views. Parks and open space amenities will be required for residential parcels B and D. Parcel E is being converted to open space with this amendment. The view corridors identified in the Comprehensive Plan and shown here in purple will also be preserved. Uplands will preserve and return the views to the neighbors that surround the site. Opportunity number three, the vision for this neighborhood, is found by looking back and forward. This land was always intended to be a signature Westminster neighborhood, complete with shops and businesses. In fact, this image is the 1906 plat filed for this area by Westminster University. The outline of this area is our Parcel A. The entire plat showed over 6,000 homes on this site, in this area, excuse me. Over a century later, in 2013, the city confirmed the original intended use of the land as a traditional mixed-use neighborhood through its Comprehensive Land Use Plan, authorizing up to 3,500 homes, retail, office, parks, and open spaces. Now, as part of the Westminster Forward public outreach process, these parcels have been identified as opportunity areas.
There are five minutes remaining.
Thank you. Even the future planning addresses this site. The site is identified in the urban growth boundary of MetroVision 2035 and encourages medium density to complement the existing low-density neighborhoods. Thus, our site history, the comp plan, Westminster Forward, and MetroVision 2035 have all envisioned these parcels for residential and mixed-use development. We have over 100 years of vision and planning for this neighborhood. Opportunity number four for additional neighborhood improvements is in the form of utilities. Please note, as is your city policy, all onsite and additional offsite improvements will be funded by our development, not by the surrounding neighbors. Water systems are adequate to supply domestic usage and fire protection, and this system will be further strengthened with our infrastructure improvements. Sanitary sewer offsite systems currently have some deficiencies, but development will assist in bringing these into proper conformance. And lastly, stormwater drainage improvements must be added, and we will significantly reduce some current flooding conditions adjacent to these parcels. The fifth opportunity relates to the economic benefit from Uplands. Uplands will benefit the surrounding schools by generating more students, which increases the per pupil funding state allocations, additional mill levy fundings, as well as cash-in-lieu contributions. New and existing surrounding commercial, office, and retail land uses will offer employees great options for housing nearby, additional patrons for small businesses, and a new generation of riders for the public transportation system. Lastly, the city will benefit from additional property and sales tax revenue, impact fees, as well as the physical public land dedication and cash-in-lieu for parks and other public uses. Uplands will have a profound economic benefit to Westminster. Although many speakers tonight will focus on the larger parcels, we are here to request the land use amendments to the three small parcels shown in orange. We join staff and Planning Commission in agreeing that our three amendments are consistent with the comp plan, other relevant city plans, and your approval criteria. Specifically, these changes help promote the orderly physical growth as described in MetroVision 2035. The plan provides direction for land use and transportation planning and includes these parcels as these parcels as part of the urban growth boundary. The plan promotes smaller lots, more compact development patterns, and encourages the use of overlooked vacant parcels for infill development. Please note, these parcels have been envisioned for development for the past two decades as part of the comprehensive plan. These parcels were never envisioned to remain as farmland. The proposed amendments help meet the goals and policies of the existing comprehensive plan, including well-designed, attractive neighborhoods, a range of high-quality living options, and provide infrastructure to serve the community or the needs of all community members. Finally, the amendment also helps address the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment recommendation for diversity of for-sale housing. Uplands will help provide housing and create community through infill and enable greater diversity. Mayor and councilors, I just want to conclude by accurately framing our request. Uplands is 235 acres over five parcels. Many of the speakers will comment on the overall site, but that is not at issue this evening. The three proposed comp plan amendments are only 20% of the overall site. Parcel B adds up to 40 residential units on 27 acres. Forty units on 27 acres. Parcel D adds up to 156 residential units while removing over 300,000 square feet of office, parking, and traffic. Parcel E creates open space. The overall traffic impact of our amendments is a net reduction of both AM peak and PM peak traffic. And importantly, the water allocation made for the site is sufficient.
There's one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Is sufficient for build-out. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration of these amendments. We would request that our presentation be entered as part of the public record. The proposed land use designations for Parcel B, D, and E meet the 10 approval criteria in Section 11521B of the Westminster Code for a land use plan amendment. As was reasoned and recommended by your staff and unanimously supported by the Planning Commission, we respectfully request your approval based on our compliance with the applicable criteria. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'll see if the council has any questions of the applicant. If not, I'll move on to the public comment period. You have questions of the applicant? Ms. Seitz?
I have questions. I think you can best determine if they're for the applicant or staff. The amendment for Parcel D, going from Office to the R8 designation, I was hoping we could specifically describe the impacts proposed specifically on water, as residential units have a higher water consumption than Office. On infrastructure planning, so recognizing that we may have water rights, but we have done quite a bit of investment recently in planning on our water infrastructure and wastewater infrastructure, does this change in use impact the designs for those? And then also, actually, already answered my question on peak travel impacts, so.
Just so everyone's clear, from the applicant, if the questions are yours, I expect you to keep up with them, and we'll look for those answers. Mr. Tripp, same with staff, those that are deferred to the city, that will be our city's staff, will capture and answer those. In regards to the pieces of the question that Councilor Seitz asked, I think most of those are with city staff. Do you care to answer those now, or you want to prefer them?
I'd prefer to city staff and the Community Development Department, whatever support you need from Public Works.
And can I add that if you would prefer to defer my questions until there's been an opportunity for the public to raise their questions, I'm fine with that as well.
Counselor Seitz, I think we can answer that now. I'd like to defer to Sarah Borgers. She's with our Public Works and Utilities Department, specifically overseeing water resources.
Mayor and council, my name is Sarah Borgers. I'm the city's Water Resources and Quality Manager in Public Works. So the comprehensive plan amendments that are being brought tonight are a minimal impact to the water supply in comparison to what was planned in the 2013 comp plan. Does that address your specific question, Ms. Seitz?
Only on the water resource portion of it. I also wanted to do more holistically with our infrastructure planning. We have just recently done water tanks. We're looking at a system as a whole, so I absolutely appreciate the water resource answer of it, but would like to understand the impacts to the infrastructure.
I'm going to defer that one to others.
Both capacity and...
Yeah, Julie Kaler from Public Works and Utilities can answer that question as well, or Max. Sure.
For the record, I'm Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities Director. Although that may go beyond the purpose of this evening with the comp plan amendments, I can say in general, for more than two years, we've been very clear in our discussions with the applicant that it would be the applicant's responsibility for all necessary offsite water and sewer improvements that would be required for this project to be successful. And I imagine we would be able to address that further and more specifically in the PDP and ODP stages of this application.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is for the applicant, Jeff or Bonnie. In the video that was presented, there was a suggestion that a neighborhood such as Wash Park naming is helpful for an identity. How do you see that working with historic Westminster as an identity for that area?
Mr. Hanlon?
Thank you, Mayor Atchison, Counselor Smith, councilors. It's a good, important question. It was actually proffered by someone who's not on our team that we asked, and they're a Westminster developer. And that person offered their personal opinion on how important an identity to a name would be for a community. I'm glad you asked the question, because when we did our research, we went through the archives of a couple of different locations and found that these summits, these hills, were named after five or six names. College Hill, there's a lot of different names out here. Rose Hill, Carnation Hill. So what we could not do is properly honor all of the history with one name. So we determined as a group to call it the Uplands, meaning, denoting, that is describing all of those summits in the area. So I hope that helps in keeping it with the context of historic Westminster.
And this might be for a lot of questions for staff, but thank you for that answer. In the report, it said that at this time, a Metropolitan District Service Plan application may not be submitted to the city until the PDP and ODP has been approved. Is that something that council would have then say in? What would that mean for the development? I've seen pros and cons to a Metropolitan District Service, so can you speak to what that would look like?
Mr. Tripp?
I'll give a high-level answer to that, and then if anybody wants to add to it. Council has a policy on metropolitan districts and how they're utilized, and the city attorney can go into that tonight if you want. It's not a subject for deliberation tonight, and it would be a subject for deliberation down the road. There are a series of things that we'll have to work out with this development, and that's a really important one. So you have a policy in place. We would expect that that policy would be honored in whatever's brought to you in the future, but I think to your specific question, Counselor Smith, that will ultimately come back to you for approval. You've got to review that. You've got to be in concurrence with that, no matter what that is.
Thank you. For the Parcel E, does this become a city park and open space to maintain?
Mr. Hanlon? Since it's your land.
Mayor, Counselor Smith, it actually will become a Metropolitan District Park, open to the public, but not under the burden of the city to maintain.
Ladies and gentlemen, for any audience, be aware that everything you're saying is being picked up on microphones above you.
Just to clarify that, you know, private park into designation just means anything other than PLD, public land dedication, so that could include an HOA or a Metro District in this case.
Thank you. I need to think of other questions. I have them, I just need to get them in order, so I'll relinquish my time until I can order it.
Okay. Ms. Colley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I heard you say that going from Office to R8 would be less efficient, right? With water?
So as far as total water use, Office uses a little bit less water than R8 does. There's a little bit of a difference there that can depend heavily on site plan with outdoor water use, but definitively, in indoor water use, Office uses a little bit less than a total R8 would.
But that's the building. What about the landscape around the building?
And that's a great question, council. It really depends on what the development is built out with, the type of landscaping, and that depends largely what the developer chooses and what fits in with the landscaping regulations.
I also heard that the traffic would be diminished a bit because it would be an R8. I always have a hard time with that, because to me, I don't understand how an Office and an R8, how an R8 reduces traffic flow less than an Office.
Right. Counselor, I'd like to defer to Heath Klein, the city's transportation engineer, and he can speak about the traffic change.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heath Klein, Transportation Engineer. So yes, the increase or the residential does carry with it some trip generation, but the office space, if you think about how many people that an office area would serve for your customers and the employees, so that is how it does reduce the total number of vehicles that would be generated on that parcel.
Okay, I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you give us a bit of an example?
I can prepare for that for a little bit later, but yes. So something, I don't have the office numbers right in front of me right now, but like a commercial site that has a fast food restaurant, you know, that could generate 4,000 trips a day for a smaller site, where if you just had an R8 residential, that generates, on average, per dwelling unit, it would be about nine to 10 trips per dwelling unit.
When I envision office space, I don't envision a drive-through.
No, so I will come back and have a better answer to that.
Okay, I'm just clarifying.
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think the answer in some of the questions that are happening here come as consequence of where we are in the process. And I just want to point out again that we're really, as a staff, recommending to you what we believe to be the impact based on the information we have today. That's why we've been so adamant that the PDP and the ODP process was going to be important in our ability to analyze this data again. So if there was a use that came back into us as a part of the ODP that generated more traffic than what we'd really looked at, or water use, and had a different impact, we reserve the right to alter our recommendation based on that. So we're giving you today what we can based on the information that we have, and that's why, you know, Heath isn't really ready to say exactly what that impact's going to be until he sees that final design.
Yeah. But Mayor Portim, you had asked about the peak hour, and it did get mentioned that overall, if we look at all three parcels under consideration tonight, it does reduce the peak hour, but on the Parcel B, which is adjacent to Lowell and Bradburn Drive, the peak hour does increase on that site, but as a whole of all three parcels collectively, it does reduce it in the general area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hang on just a minute. I'm going to still try to finish up, because the applicant has indicated they'd like to try to answer part of your questions, Ms. Colley, so stand by for just a moment.
Good evening. Todd Johnson, Terraforma Solutions Engineer on the project. I can help Heath with, he's probably going back to grab these numbers, actually. In the application, what we are showing is the Office would generate about 1,247, and this is an ADT. And if we drop back down to this residential R8 that we're proposing, it is projected, again, at this comp plan level, 973, so we get a reduction of 274 in the ADT for this particular parcel that we do have.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Colley, you have other questions?
I do. So if we were not to approve this tonight, or tomorrow night, depending on how long we go, what would happen?
So to not approve it? Well, the developer still has active applications for their preliminary development plan, their annexation, and their rezoning. They would probably take the information they learned here, knowing that that wouldn't get approved, and they would modify their preliminary development plans, submit it to something that would conform to the municipal code, to the comprehensive plan designations that exist, and I presume they would still present it to you for consideration, the PDP. But I believe they could answer that question as well, if you wanted to ask them.
I do.
Mr. Hanlon, our team?
Thank you, Counselor. I'm happy to answer that question. I believe it was what would happen if this wasn't approved tonight. I think Jacob is absolutely correct. We would look again. I want to point out, all five of these parcels have underlying comp plan land use designations. So we are simply only talking about the change to those land use. So again, 40 units on Parcel B and 156 units on Parcel D. And I'll keep Parcel E out unless people have questions. I think that's pretty straightforward on that. I think the one thing I would say is, we believe so much, and one of your earlier presentations talked about compatibility, all of that comes through the PDP and ODP. Something I would say to your questions about Parcel D, to the east is Panorama Point, that is R18. To the south is Greenbrier, R18. So we are doing less intense density purposefully to really make that compatible, that transition. So that does it. You know, we would continue to work through that, we believe, on the PDP. If this doesn't go forward, of course, we would go back and continue to look at that, but we really think that what your guiding documents are telling us to do are these changes. These changes are in complete compliance with the comp plan Westminster Forward, MetroVision 2035. So we're here tonight to show that compliance with those documents and how we're comporting those in these larger out parcels surrounding the main parcel.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have one more question, and I'll defer to City Manager Tripp to determine who can answer this for me, but it's for the city. And we've talked a lot about wanting more open space in our city, and how do we acquire more open space? What would make this development either an ideal place for open space or not an ideal place for open space? Because it is vacant, it is open, why can't we, instead of putting more residents on it, why couldn't we make it open space?
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Well, the short answer to it, it's owned privately. It's owned privately right now, and the landowner has rights to that private ownership and how they can develop this land. Part of what we do when we approve development is we look at our goals as a city, and that's why we have some regulations as to open space, land that gets dedicated as a part of that. And it would be our desire to continue to work through that and provide some open space and park opportunities with this development. But really, the short answer is, is that, you know, we aren't coveting it as a city to acquire it. We're trying to attempt, we are attempting to work with the planning that's in place here today to meet our goals for open space, but to not impugn that over somebody's private ownership.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Demond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is actually for City Manager Tripp. You kind of alluded to kind of where my questions go. There's two parts. So part of it is water, and so obviously, this is just one step into a specific development. And so the question was asked, and it was alluded to, that there was enough water per the 2013 plant, 2013 comp plan. So with that being said, I imagine that, you know, if this goes forward tonight, then staff would work to make sure that, you know, you're kind of net neutral as far as what comes forward and what you would recommend that they bring forward to council and Planning Commission. Would that be accurate?
This is one step in the process, and we're here tonight to address our responsibility to comply with that step in the process, and we'll have the same with PDP and ODP. And then you ultimately will have the decision points along the way there. And then you ultimately will have the decision points along the way there on a series of policy and budget and programmatic types of decisions on the water utility, transportation, parks and open spaces, the metro district, you know, just to name a few of them. So this is a step in that process, and, you know, your staff has addressed that and I think done a good job of trying, of attempting to apply the regulations that we use as rules at this step in the process. So to get to the kind of the core of your question, Counselor, yes, we reserve the right to make independent judgments along the way on each of those elements, and we'll give you the best advice we can.
I appreciate that. I think it's an important piece of what you guys do for us. The other thing that I'm curious about is, so there's talk, and obviously, this is next steps, but for us to change this land use tonight, I have to think about what could happen in the future. And so what could happen in the future is a development that doesn't move forward. And I mean, that's always a thing that we have to deal with as far as making a change to land use. So my question is, as far as, is staff comfortable that this land use is going to fit our strategic plan moving forward, whether it's with the uplands or with any other development that might happen on that? Because obviously, you know, for us to tie it to a particular land use, if that doesn't go forward, then either somebody else comes and uses that land use, or it would have to come back to us for another change. So I just want to know if we've really thought through that piece of it.
I think I'm going to defer to Ms. McConnell. I think the question, Ms. McConnell, is really around the fact that we are in the midst of a comp plan review, and we're going to be bringing forward an update to that. And is your question, Counselor, is this compatible? A compatible decision right now with that process?
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought up the pending comp plan changes, because I think that that's part of it. Does this fit our overall future plans for, you know, what that area is to look like, whether it's a plan or some other development?
So we do have to isolate the vision that we heard tonight and really just keep it to the actual use and the intensity of development. The future comp plan that we're in the process of reviewing and analyzing has not made those decisions on those parcels yet. We're still in the outreach and internal staff judgment and decision-making on what that's going to be. Now, that being said, we applied the standards of the existing comp plan and the existing strategic plan for these uses, and we found them to be in compliance. Again, it's isolated. We know what that vision looks like, but we can't apply what that looks like. We're just saying that the use is going to be appropriate now based on our existing ability to provide services and that the intensity is appropriate. When we give future plans, if it's not this, and someone else comes along, we're going to review their vision now to the standards we have in place at the time.
That makes sense, but I think in previous hearings where we're changing comprehensive land use, it's been asked multiple times if we're taking into account our future plans and our current planning. So I have to imagine in the Westminster Forward and all that planning and the new comp plan that this is being at least looked at as we evaluate what we're doing with our overall strategic plan for the city and land use.
Yes, the staff that's involved in the comprehensive plan update is also involved in the decisions we make on development and review projects. They're aware of our recommendations. They are having consensus with our recommendations. Some of them are here tonight. So yes, it's being considered, but until you adopt that next comp plan update, we can't be definitive and say, that's what you're going to do then. We can only focus on...
Well, that makes sense, but I guess what I'm getting at is, I have to imagine that you're taking into account what we're looking at strategically for the whole city.
Yes.
When you agree to say, we recommend this to the council.
Yes, exactly. In the current comp plan, there is an existing land use chart, and it has a certain percentage allocated to certain densities and land use. That future land use chart to 2035 shows adjustments to that. This proposal is in range with those future adjustments we've already anticipated.
Great, that's perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I add just one thing on that, Counselor? The ordinances before you also include a conditional approval that they do not take effect until the pillarifier actually sells the property to the developer or yet, and that would have to happen within two years of this meeting, or of the approval of the ordinances.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Slides?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I ask, I have questions pertaining to four more of the criteria. And before I ask them, I do want to say, I understand that this is just the first proposal, and if it was to pass tonight, there would be multiple ways for the city to vet the appropriateness of this development. However, the criteria does list some impacts to infrastructure and other things, and so there is a threshold level to get past this. And so I don't discount or misunderstand that we will get more specific information. I need to feel that that threshold level I am comfortable with. So please apologize if you feel this is not relevant. To me, it is relevant based off of my understanding of those criteria. In the first criteria, there is a reference to our policy in regards to view corridors. I believe it references CIDP 20, but it doesn't give council, and I don't have that memorized, an example of what that is. Can you describe briefly what our current policy is on preserving view corridors and how this will fulfill that?
Yes, Counselor. So the view corridors are all established in the Westminster Comprehensive Plan in Chapter Six under the community identification section, and it's a little vague on exactly how it explains they are to be preserved. The city's done it multiple ways. Typically, it's done through the preliminary development plan where the city will reserve a certain area of land that cannot be built on. And so that's something that we're just in discussion with the applicant on, on the PDP. We have not put that into the comprehensive plan as, say, changing or telling them that they should leave a portion of the property as like a private park or private open space. So we've deferred all of that protection of the view corridor to the PDP itself.
Okay, I guess I'm confused because it is referenced in the first, one of our examples of how the criteria is met. It specifically lists that, so...
Yeah, so I think what we were trying to say in the memo is that this proposal does not remove the view corridors that affect both the B and D parcels. So I don't know that's in their authority to even ask to amend that, but it's clear that this proposal is not going to eliminate the view corridors that are shown inside the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. My next question actually pertains to criteria eight and nine. The proposed amendment will not negatively impact the transportation system. There's a few more criteria on there, and the proposed amendment will not negatively impact referral agencies. I could not help but notice that both CDOT and Adams County seem to feel that this would have a larger impact on transportation and require multiple, it seemed like there was a level of concern from both of those referral agencies. Can you help me reconcile that with the negative delta that I'm hearing on peak travel from the applicant, that there would actually be less impact?
Sure. I'd like to defer that to our Transportation Engineer, Heath Klein, to answer, and if he doesn't have a good answer, I'll back him up.
Okay. I'm sure he'll have a good answer.
I'm not sure if I, good evening, Council, Mayor. So Heath Klein, again. I am not familiar with the responses that Adams County has provided, but I believe it's really looking at the project as a whole rather than just this comprehensive plan amendment. So what's before us again tonight is the comprehensive plan of those three parcels, and that's where that negative delta is. But as a whole, yes, when the uplands project comes with parcel A, there will be some transportation impacts to that.
So, Counselor, to elaborate a little bit, one of the challenges we've had is sending referrals out to other agencies is oftentimes, other agencies don't have long-range planning staff who look at this impact from a perspective of what's the designation currently, R3.5? What's the proposed designation, R5? What's the impact that nexus in between those two designations? Oftentimes, they look at the parcel as vacant land to completely build out as something else. And so to them, it is going to be purely just, whether you say a negative impact, it's an impact on their agency because it does create traffic from vacant land to development. I think largely, that's probably more of a question for you to determine whether you think it's a negative impact, but this will create impacts. Transportation, it is kind of isolated in between the two parcels. On CDOT specifically, they didn't really voice whether they said this was a negative impact to them. If you read their agency reviews, they kind of were more indicative that they would get behind it if it met all of their policies.
It was confusing, it was a bit confusing in how it was worded. My final question for you is in regards to criteria 10, which the proposed amendment establishes minimal environmental impacts or has sufficiently mitigated any identified impacts. I'm curious, what do we actually look at for that? How do we satisfy that requirement or feel that, not we, how does the applicant satisfy that requirement?
Yeah, so the applicant in their narrative provides a justification or a statement as to why they feel they comply with that or how their development impacts it. From a city planning policy, we interact with several other departments inside the city and look at what would be the nexus between the current designation versus the proposed designation. And I think in a large, broad perspective, you could say more housing units, more people, more environmental impact. But at the same time, it's kind of up to how is that specifically, how is that specifically at the local level applied? What type of houses are they? Are they more energy efficient? And a lot of those are so ambiguous to answer at a comp plan amendment stage that they're really hard to define that specific environmental impact. We do require, this is during the PDP stage and ODP stage, we do require an environmental assessment for any land they would dedicate to the city for right-of-way parks or open space. And if it's dedicated to a school, they also have to provide a geologic report analysis to show the school, the school district that it's safe to put a school there. But both of those are at a later stage of application. So it's, it is a little ambiguous exactly what the city is supposed to analyze in the environmental portion of criteria 10.
Thank you.
Mr. Volz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm following up on Mayor Protem's sites concern. We have criteria here. I would ask questions about them, and it's like we're not at the right point in the process. So I, for instance, drainage, criteria number eight specifically lists drainage. Do we know what, how this will impact drainage and what they're going to do for flooding and those issues in this area that this may exacerbate that problem? At this stage, do we have answers to that?
We do generally, Counselor. So regardless of any type of development, we have specific regulations that apply to every single type that will require them to solve all of their 100-year drainage on their own property, and they're required to pay for all of those improvements. That's not something the city would pay for. The reason why I don't think we go into a large analysis is just because they're allowed to build a maximum amount of so many units on a property under the comp plan designation. Earlier, Rita had said, that doesn't necessarily mean they'll ever get to build that many units. They could be limited by the size of the detention pond they need, how much right-of-way they need to reduce all of that. And so while we look at it from the maximums that could be allowed in the comprehensive plan analysis, ultimately, their actual PDP and development plans are generally below that maximum. The drainage itself, it's, the statement basically from our engineering division is regardless of the type of the development, they will be required to put in a drainage infrastructure system that meets that criteria.
But at this stage, we don't have anything to look at yet.
That's correct. So because we're not looking at a site plan analysis here, all we're saying is any future development of this parcel, whether it's R3.5 or R5 or office or R8, there is a specific set of engineering criteria that they must meet regardless of type of development.
Okay. And then to follow up on Counselor Scully's comment, and I think you just addressed this with Mayor Protem's sites, but what is the criteria that the city imposes on development for green space or park space or open space based on 3.5, 8? How does, what do you require? When does that come? Is it also PDP?
It is PDP, but it's, it could be discussed here as well. So there are several different criteria that the city uses. So the first one is public land dedication, and that's just land to be dedicated to the city for public purposes. We have used it for open space. We've used it for parks, and we can also use it for a water tank if we need to use it for a water tank. That would, the criteria is 12 acres per thousand persons, and then it breaks it down to three, kind of does an analysis of how many people would be generated by the housing allowed there. And that's why we delay it to the PDP to determine how many units they would actually have before we determine how much land they would dedicate. On the private park side, there is a straight requirement in the design standards that you adopted in 2018, and that is 4% minimum of private park for the R5 and R8 categories.
Can you say that again?
So 4% of the total site for the R5 and the R8 categories. And that's been developed, this is, the same standard has been in place for 15-plus years, and you can see in some of the newer developments, that 4%.
Right, okay. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to you on who's best to answer this question. I'm trying to get a visualization of what R5 looks like and if there is a local, preferably Westminster neighborhood that I could compare that to.
Yes, Counselor. So the best neighborhood probably to use as an example is commonly referred to as Tuscany Trails. It's across the street from the Westminster Sports Center on Westminster Boulevard at about 95th Avenue. That is in R5 development. I believe the houses there are mostly two-story. It's kind of an alley-loaded product development, and I wrote down the lot numbers anticipating you would answer, ask this question. So the average lot size in that development is 4,064 square feet, and the gross density for that development was 4.238 dwelling units per acre.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And staff, these are questions directed to you. There is a, in the report that we received, one of the questions came from John Carpenter, who is a former Westminster employee. You may have answered these questions, but I didn't see them as part of this report, so I'm just going to reiterate his questions. So he asked, based on the population allowed, what amount of public land dedication is required?
So we're taking just a guess based off their total proposal, and this would be for the entire uplands and really isn't a specific comp plan question, but based off of 2,350 units and 70% of the units being single-family detached as just a metric, they'd owe somewhere between 80 and 85 acres of public land dedication.
Thank you. The other question is, as an aside, when he was involved in open space acquisition, preservation of land at the southeast corner of Federal and 84th and the hill west of Lowell at 82nd were top priorities, are these locations still top priorities for the city? Why or why not?
Mr. Tripp, who you want to deliver?
So they are priorities for the city. They are something that we are requesting to both preserve as view corridors, and they are things we're looking at taking as part of the public land dedication. We, again, because that's part of something, the city staff works with the development team on the PDP side through the PLD, and we'll do that the preliminary development plan and the official development plan stage. It's not something I could say that staff or the applicant are in agreement on what that would look like, but it would be something that we would negotiate at that time through city management, so.
Thank you. Do you happen to know how the proposed gross density of this development compared to Bradburn?
You're asking about the density total?
Yeah, I'm just reiterating his question here.
Okay.
Do you happen to know the proposed gross densities?
Gross density.
Of the development compared to Bradburn?
I don't have the total density for Bradburn on hand right now. I could prepare it and get it for another time. Roughly this development, if you do the 235 acres and 2,350, it's 10 to use an acre for this development, if you do the total development. this development, if you do the total development.
We'll get the exact answer. I'm sure there'll be a break or a time later in the evening that we can get it precisely.
Thank you. My last, or one of my last questions is, is there a school site proposed here? Many years ago, SD 50 staff wanted a site on which to build a replacement for the two close by elementary schools.
So there is not a school site proposed as part of this development. SD 50, which is now Westminster Public Schools, has stated they don't want property for a city. They would like, there's another fee that the city exacts, it's called the School Land Dedication Fee, and we can take that as cash in lieu or as physical property. The school district has indicated that they would prefer to receive cash in lieu. They believe they have sufficient facilities on available, and they say they have room in their classrooms for the proposed development.
Thank you. My last question is, what criteria do we use for police and fire and effectively being able to provide those services?
So those criteria, as far as the comp plan, there's only one criteria that specifically says police and fire services. We route the development out to them, show them the proposed analysis, and leave it up to those individual departments to answer that. I believe both of the chiefs are here tonight, and they could speak to that if you would like to ask them directly.
Yes, please.
Ms. Smith, are you asking just for the ones that we're considering tonight?
Yeah.
Because we're not taking the, remember, we're not looking at the development as a whole. You're looking at one element of it.
Right. One of the, one of the criteria is.
Number eight.
Yes. But I am asking, what do we use as a criteria internally to know that we provided efficient services for this development?
Chiefs? If you have an ability to answer us.
So, again, I don't think it's for this development of 230 acres. The assessment we've had so far is on these three particular parcels, and until we know exactly how the rest of the development is going to build out, we can't, we can't answer that with certainty. There certainly will be impacts, and I know the chiefs are both looking at that, but when we come back with PDP, ODP, we'll be prepared to address specifics, numbers of officers and trip times and all those kinds of things that relate to public safety. Having said that, Chief Carlson, do you have an assessment of what you've seen as a part of this action tonight?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Council Mayor, we do have a formula for assessing the impact of a development, but it really does depend on the specifics of the development and the numbers of units and people that we anticipate being there. So it's a little early right now to give us that. That assessment that we use is very similar to what the IACP used for us a couple of years ago in assessing our staffing now. It has to do with time available and time in service and admin time and all those kinds of things, but that all then plays into the number of people in a designated area.
Thank you.
Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Counselor Seymour.
Hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No. All right. Ms. Scully, go ahead. Our famous fire chief was going to run over and tell us the problem.
I would defer to our famous fire chief because he's amazing.
Uh-oh, we're in trouble now.
How much time do I have? Good evening, Mayor and Council, Doug Hall, Fire Chief. Mr. Tripp did pretty much describe the process for us. This early in the process, we're looking at the broader picture, and it primarily involves occupancy type, residential versus commercial, commercial versus industrial, et cetera, et cetera. Where we really get down to the nitty-gritty is when we see the PDP and ODPs. At this point in time, with the parcels under review for tonight, we would look pretty broadly at a capacity concept titled unit hour utilization, which basically compares projected activities over a 24-hour period. And quite frankly, at this point in time, what we're seeing presented for tonight, quite honestly, is pretty negligible in terms of what our activity levels would be for residential dwelling.
All right, Ms. Scully.
You sure? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Counselor Seymour raised a question about R 5. So it makes me curious, what is, what would be an example of an R 3.5 and an R 8? Just so I can put it in my head, because your first example was very visual, and I now have a great picture. I want more pictures in my head, so what can you give me?
So, starting with an R 3.5, one of the most recent, under some of our new design standards, design regulations or design guidelines bill, would be Country Club Village. It's about 120th and east of Federal Parkway. That's 7,000 square foot lots minimum. They do go above that in that development. It has the 4% of the total site, private park, includes a clubhouse and such, and most of those, I believe, are all ranch units. I don't, I'm not sure if they have any two-story as part of that. But two-story units can be built in an R 3.5. In an R 8, there's actually a lot of examples of R 8 development throughout the city. I picked on one that's just newer and right next to City Hall, the Connections Property. Is a total density of 6.6 DUs an acre, and just in case everybody's not aware, where it's at, it's just down the street here on Yates, north of 88th Avenue. So that's a density of 6.6 dwelling units per acre with the minimum lot size of 2,325 square feet.
Any other questions, Ms. Scully?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Mr. Volz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question for the developer. We're looking at three parcels tonight. Why aren't we looking at all five at the same time?
I think, thank you, Counselor. I'll just address that. First of all, as we mentioned, the larger two parcels, Parcell A and C, are already mixed-use, traditional T-mund is the zone for A. That already reflects your comp plan goals and policies. And Westminster Forward. These three parcels, and why this matters and why this is important, is these reflect what are in your guiding documents and Westminster Forward now. You have had a focus on a diversity of housing, on smaller lots. Actually, the outreach that's being done on Westminster Forward, the second most prominent asks that they don't want to have are large lot, single-family. We don't, we're seeing a change in the buyer and the type of housing. We have executive housing, but we need smaller, missing-middle housing. So we think it is so important, and staff, I think absolutely correctly, said you should deal with these three comp amendments before you come forward with the PDP, because it's about the vision of the community. It's actually about reflecting and transitioning with our neighbors. So that's why we're doing these three only. Thank you.
Mr. Demott?
I think it was probably in one of your slides, but I'm just trying to picture here on four. The surrounding developments, can you, did one of the slides show what their zone matches up with the ones?
In particular, I think he's referring to Lot B.
I would actually refer you to the attachments, and that would be attachment, did I flip to it? Sorry. I would go to attachment to the comprehensive plan map changes. And then if you're referring to Parcel B, that'll show you a before and after with the adjoining land uses labeled, adjoining comprehensive plan land use designations labeled.
Okay. Hang on, Jacob. Let him get there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff or the applicant at this point? Okay. At this point, I'm going to start the opening of the comments of the public. We'll remind everyone that you are limited to three minutes. Please make sure you're addressing your comments to the criteria that we can consider, or the pieces that are here before us tonight and not for the overall project, because we're not talking about the overall project. I will call you in the order that I have received them from the city clerk, as they have received them from the back. If you still, reminder, if you wish to speak to this, you must be signed up. My first one is Dr. Pamela Swanson.
My name's Dr. Pamela Swanson, and I'm Superintendent of Westminster Public Schools. In Westminster Public Schools, we believe that a community is only as strong as its public schools, and that comes from many collaborative partnerships, such as the relationship our school district has with our city. Right now, our high school students are working with the city on several exciting projects that we hope will benefit taxpayers while giving real-life opportunities to our students. And partnering with the city on feeding over 100,000 meals to families in our community this past summer is another noteworthy mention. And I would be remiss if I did not also call out our partnership with the city on our successful Westminster Boys and Girls Club that has now reached maximum capacity, I'm happy to report. Not surprisingly, people have asked our school district a number of questions about the Uplands development and its potential impact on Westminster Public Schools. And while this is clearly a decision that the council will make, I would like you to know we stand ready to partner with the developer in a collaborative way, much like we have partnered with our city. In looking closely at the plan with the developer, we have also determined through our analysis, we have five schools within close proximity of the development, and will be able to absorb the projected increased enrollment numbers without issue. That's been a big question for us. And because five schools are within range, as has already been mentioned by a staff person, we have also signaled to the city that a cash-in-lie of land arrangement pending council's approval would be a compatible match with our school district's long-range plans. And for these reasons, we support the development. As most people in this room know, Westminster Public Schools is no stranger to change and forward momentum, and progress can be hard. So the takeaway I hope I leave you with this evening is if the city decides in favor of the Uplands development, we're ready and we believe we're postured to assist in any way possible to ensure a positive outcome for our residents and present and future students. Thank you for listening.
Ryan McCoy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ryan McCoy, and I serve as the President of Westminster Public School Board of Education. This evening, I'm here on behalf of the WPS Board of Education to signal our support for the development at Pillar of Fire. The reason for our support may seem trivial, but it's the concern and reality many school districts within the greater metropolitan area are faced with, and that is shrinking enrollment. For over a decade, WPS has consulted with, consulted with Western demographics to better understand population trends in, of the greater area and how these trends impact future enrollment and staffing within our school district. This work has also taken into consideration both boundary changes as well as other land developments. What we have learned from our work with Western demographics is that their projections have not been wrong. WPS, along with other districts, have seen this continued decline in enrollment. Over the past decade, WPS has adapted and has focused a great, a great amount of effort on, including staff and resources, trying to find some of these solutions to boost enrollment. We have added innovation schools within our school district. In addition, we have converted a number of K5s to P8s just to accommodate the needs of our community. And for the most part, our solutions have seen some success, but they're still bleeding within our schools. Unfortunately, regardless of those efforts, there are many external factors that are outside of our control of the district. For our last meeting with the demographer, the projections over the next five years show continual decline in enrollment, indicating that the trends are not changing. The district is faced with some hard truths. People are still leaving the area, whether they are seeking affordable housing in other communities or looking for work elsewhere. But the one fact still remains the same: people are not having kids. The Board of Education understands that the development at Pillar of Fire will provide multifamily, single, and single-family housing, bringing more families to the area, in essence, more children to WPS. We are in the business of educating children, and our work and funding depends on such growth. At this point of time, with our recent successes in both academic growth and achievement, we are poised to receive more students within our schools and look forward in doing so. The Board of Education also wanted me to comment tonight that we understand that the city's decision is a difficult one. It's one where you will hear a lot of comments from your community members, and I'm glad they're here tonight expressing all their concerns. But we will stand with you regardless of whatever decision you make and continue our partnership with the City of Westminster and WPS. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Kevin Jenkins?
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors. My name is Kevin Jenkins, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer for St. Anthony North Hospital, and honored to come this evening just for a couple of minutes, share my thoughts. And really, as I look at where we're at today, you know, St. Anthony North has such a rich legacy in the community of now 49 years, and for the last couple of years, we spent a lot of time, and me personally, spent a lot of time with, talking with Uplands and what this could look like in the community, and really exploring it and understanding it. And through all those conversations, I truly believe the Uplands team, you know, in collaboration with Centura Health over the last couple of years, we were able to assess the development of the community, and we are, we and they are both eager to explore ways to highlight community wellness in their visioning and in programming. And as a neighboring community member, we support the Uplands community as it advances through the approval process. The development of the Uplands site is exciting for the future of the St. Anthony 84th Neighborhood Health Center and campus, as well as other nearby St. Anthony North facilities. And I'm really excited for the opportunity to reimagine what health and wellness can look like in that community in relation to not only what we provide within our campus and our healthcare setting, but also in the community itself. We do a lot of focus groups, and one thing we hear quite a bit is, is how do we engage more around parks? How do we engage more around healthy activities and wellness and eating? And in all of our conversation with the Uplands, I truly believe we have a large, a big opportunity to really create something that'll be special for the community and really help continue to build the vision of where we're going. Thank you.
Naomi Decker?
My name is Naomi Decker, and checking with the Colorado property lookup, I discovered that all the properties, all of, all of the property for all the parcels except E, that Uplands is proposing is owned by Pillar of Fire at 8,700 Irving Street under parcel number 0171929220006, with tax account numbers of R 0194201202203 and 204. And those have not been sold. However, the Uplands parcel E of 1.2 acres is shown as the Pillar of Fire at 3,455 West 3083rd Avenue under parcel 0171929104002, with a tax account of R 0060705. And that is also not sold. Usually, they're probably going to, this is, this was set as a private park and open space by Uplands, and not sure what that meant, but at first it was going to be an office space, probably for the metro district. And as these metro districts work, Uptown would buy a small piece of this land, let's say parcel E, then have the rest of the property financed by other developers, so speculating to build apartments, condos, et cetera. Then Uplands uses that money from those speculators as collateral to buy more land to sell to more speculators, and so on, and so on, and so on. Also checking with the Colorado Real Estate Commission under the Colorado Department of Regulatory Agencies subdivision, Developer Rules, Uplands is not registered with the Colorado Real Estate Commission and is required, as is required under Chapter 4, which states certain subdivisions and their developers must register with the Colorado Real Estate Commission prior to selling, leasing, transferring, or negotiating, negotiating to sell or lease a part of that division. And it's also under, they have not registered. And it's also under, they have not registered with SB 35, which regulates these subdivisions of 32 acres and less. Therefore, it seems that the Uplands is only speculating on this land and is only waiting for a developer to buy into this subdivision that is not registered with the Colorado Department of Regulatory Agents Subdivision Developer Rules as required. Therefore, it's, finally, it has been rumored that Westminster does not have enough water to build out downtown Westminster.
Ms. Decker, your time is up.
Thank you.
Richard Decker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Richard Decker. And it's a little loud there. What I'm concerned is Mr. Hammond in his presentation said, "Light Rail Station is real close." It is actually three miles from this point. It is down there on Westminster Station at 68th and Vaughn. You cannot get there without going down Federal. Any other attempt, you will get there, but it's traffic-clogged. So therefore, it's not close. It will not be close for another 40 years. Counselor Lindsey Smith will agree with me. RTD has refused to work and make the Boulder Line prominent. We all have paid taxes to RTD to get this line in. It has been $0 on it. As for the, it says, affordable houses. It won't be affordable, trust me. I live next to Midtown. They started out at 350,000 and now they're in the upper hundreds of thousands. And a couple of them pushed a million. So it's not going to be affordable at all in any way, shape, or form. Number two, there is no ADA housing slated anywhere for that. And that's a federal law, and they're not taking care of it. And, you know, you gotta take care of those old people, too. We're not just some little thing you can shove off in a home someplace. And you don't have the water. Rumor has it you don't have water for, barely enough water to do downtown Westminster. There's also rumor that somebody in the water department said, "You don't have the water to even start doing this." If you don't have the water, why are we wasting our time? Why are we here listening to all the horsepucky that these people put out? Their video showed Midtown, it showed downtown, not Tyson, but Tennyson. It showed everything else. In Midtown, if you really want to see what this is going to be, you really want to look at what's going to be here in the future, go take a drive-through of Midtown. That's all I have to say.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to give a couple of names so we can try to keep people moving as much as we can. My next one up is Selena Shepherd. After that is Ann Ragsdale, and Cirillo. And after that, Keys. So the next three or four, just kind of get ready. Ms. Shepherd.
Hello, Council, Mayor. My name is Selena Shepherd. I'm a resident of the Alto Apartments, which is an affordable housing complex. And I'm representing the Alto Community Council, which is on behalf of the residents of the Alto Council. So we, as the Alto Community Council, would like a stipulation in the Uplands development plan that would require some affordable housing. We've seen in other cities that they require 20% or more of affordable housing. We understand that Uplands may consider attainable housing, but the council would like to make the distinction between affordable housing and attainable housing, as attainable housing does not include the lowest-income brackets. We would also like to see conversations around affordable housing and new developments in the future, and would like to be involved in that process. And so, and the importance of affordable housing, I'd just like to briefly share that I am on a fixed income. The apartment that I was in before this one, before Alto, was more than half of my income and was increasing steadily, and I knew I had to move. And I was just discouraged with the prospects. I looked around and most of the affordable and substantial housing was not available due to high demand. And so fortunately, I was able to find Alto Apartments. And not only has it provided me peace and security, but it also has helped me gain financial stability and look towards the future. I'm now able to save for emergencies and also look for further education opportunities. This is a passion of mine. I've also heard many stories of how affordable housing has changed the lives of the people in our community and in families. And so I just want to reiterate that the council would be in, would be in agreement with this development only if it requires some affordable housing. And we'd like to be involved in confirmation, concert, conversation, excuse me, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ragsdale.
Ms. Keys, you'll be up next.
In 1958, I became a Westminster resident. I am Ann Ragsdale, and since June 15, 1988, we've resided at 8120 Osceola. Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff. A bit of history. A few years into our current residency, staff for the City of Westminster put forth a proposal to install a 365-foot radio tower in the water tank property in our neighborhood. The then-city council, as I imagine today, initially embraced the staff proposal, since staff offered no alternative. Our neighbors presented to council the reasons why this was not a good idea. Council voted to locate that tower on Squaw Mountain instead. Hate to tell you this, but staff is not always correct, and after leaving city employment may not be residents for the future community interest. Council, you are elected to make policy. Tonight, I speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning of parcel B in what was previously Rose Hill, now Uplands. I met with the developers and organized two neighborhood meetings with them, and at the recent Planning Commission hearing, they privately requested a third meeting, which did not occur. Neighbors surveyed regarding the third meeting felt that if the developers had no new parcel B information, there was no need to meet. My personal objection tonight is with parcel B. If staff or council have ever visited our neighborhood, you know that it is a neighborhood gathering of individual homes on larger land parcels, taking advantage of views offered by the elevation. Thus, the name of the subdivision is Updoratory Huts. We take great pride in our properties. My request is that this council respect the residential portion of parcel B to remain with the view corridor, which is as important to the entire city as it is to current and future relative, future residents. The parcel B proposed change to five residences does not flow with the existing neighborhood. Please vote no on this change to parcel B. On a separate note, please consider the opportunity to postpone the entire project as a metropolitan district when this issue arises. Recent Denver Post articles have exposed the possibilities of added absorbent and taxation to metro district property owners. The table amendment to the Constitution of the State of Colorado somewhat hinders municipalities.
Your time is up, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before I call up the next person, council, it's currently 10:03. We are getting ready for number nine of 70. Unless we're planning to be here all night, I'm going to recommend that we go no more than one more hour. See where we're at, and then I want to recommend that we consider recessing for the night and then coming back tomorrow night at 6:30. But right now, we're at 10:04. Council, I need at least a motion to get us to at least 11, which would be an additional half hour.
So moved.
So moved?
Well, I actually had my light on. I was going to recommend we go an hour and then cut it off at 11:30 so everybody knows that's how far we're going.
You okay with 11:30?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for continuation to 11:30.
Any objection from council? Not all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to go for another 90 minutes. Wherever we're at is where we're going to end up. You must be signed up tonight to get to speak. I'm not going to reopen it for signups tomorrow night. We will continue this at 11:30 with a recess of the hearing. We will reconvene tomorrow night at 6:30 right here. We'll get through as many more as we can in the next 90 minutes. Council, are you okay to continue without another break? Are you okay for now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Paz, Al, Cirillo, or Carrillo? I'm butchering the name, but I think I made it clear who it is. Ms. Keys, you will be up next. Keith Orwell, you'll be up after that.
Is it, my name is Monica Caravelo. I, too, am an Alto resident at the Unison Housing Partners, apartment 511. I am here for affordable housing, not 100% affordable housing for a reason, because of the word affordable. Everybody I'm hearing doesn't have the correct meaning of what affordable really means. I have an architectural degree, and I lived half my life because of my two children who are terminally ill in Portland, Oregon. And affordable means that's zero-carbon emissions going green, passing on to your residents' affordable rent so that they don't have to pay higher utilities or even utilities at all. That's what affordability means. And as far as having a problem with the open spaces versus the beautiful terracing of the land, I don't understand why we can't get past the groundhogs and the rats and all these things that pop up out of the ground and we have to find ourselves killing the vermin. Because really, the beautifying of a terraced land according to cultural concepts that Uplands has is a beautiful experience. I mean, like, imagine if you had two terminally ill children like I had. Now, what would be the last thought that you would want to remember, to hold on to for the rest of your life? Because we're all human. We all have children, and we all have these bad experiences that cause medical catastrophe in our lives. So what would that last moment you would want your child to have for a memory for the rest of its life? Wouldn't it want to be in a rose garden smelling a flower? Because that's the last moment and memory I have of my child picking up a little pebble next to a Japanese pond, next to a bonsai, next to the rhododendron gardens, walking a pathway, tactile-touching artwork. That's what I remember, the smell of scent of beautiful roses, just like our hills, the Carnation Hill, the Rose Hill. That's what I want my terminally ill child to remember. And I think that every other mother and father would want the same thing for their children, just like the schools are in support of the Uplands project. I, too, am in support of the Uplands project for my terminally ill children and all the other terminally ill children after and before them. Thank you.
Mr. Keys.
Good evening.
Would you introduce yourself, sir?
Luis Gomez, Spanish interpreter.
Okay.
Mi nombre es Pascual Carrillo and soy el dueño de Hill Store. My name is Pascual Carrillo and I am the owner of, what is it? The Hill Store. The Hill Store. Hemos escuchado muchos comentarios aquí sobre el proyecto. We've heard several comments about the project. En la realidad es que este creo que este proyecto beneficia a todos los negocios que estamos alrededor. And the reality is, I think that this project really benefits all of us businesses that are surrounding it. A la ciudad, a las escuelas va a crear trabajos. The city, the schools, it's going to generate, generate jobs? En creo que hay comentarios negativos pero en realidad tenemos que pensar en lo que nos ayudaría este proyecto. And there have been some negative comments, but in reality, we have to think about how this project would help us? Porque yo he estado allí en ese lugar por más de 20 años y sé lo que nos beneficiaría a los negocios que estamos ahí alrededor. And I have been at this place for 20 years, and I know how much it would benefit us for all of the businesses that are in the surrounding area. Yo sé que es una decisión difícil de todos ustedes. I know that it's a very difficult decision for all of you. Pero vamos a ver qué pasa. But we will see what happens. Thank you.
Ms. Keys? Aaron Keys? I'm sorry. No, it's, it looks like Keys, here on 2900 West 86. Well, I have a second one that has the exact same address. First name is Keith.
That's Roundpoint Academy, they've left.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Swanson, you've already testified. Mr. Jenkins, you've testified. Monica Caravelo? And that was you? Okay. You're making progress. I can't tell. I can see shadows moving outside the room, so I don't know if there's somebody moving out there or not. Again, Kurt Pastas, P-A-S-T-A-S.
Thanks for letting me share a few of my thoughts with you this evening. My name is Brian Dice. I'm in my 24th year as a real estate, residential real estate broker. The past about seven years, I've been working as a hyper-localist primarily focused on the Westminster real estate market in the surrounding area. And I'm also the chairman of the board for the Westminster Chamber of Commerce this year. So I'm kind of wearing both of those hats in my comments this evening. From what I've seen, which is quite a bit at this point, of the plans for the Uplands project, I believe it to be something that is beneficial to our city and to our community for the following reasons. As all of you know, better than most, Westminster's done a great job of attracting a lot of really good employers over the last however many years. good employers over the last however many years, which has created a lot of really good jobs. Unfortunately, as we're trying to find a large segment of that workforce, a place that they can live here affordably, it's tough. Um, especially if they want to own their home as opposed to renting their home. And so what happens is at the end of their workday, these folks end up driving out of our city into a different community, likely somewhere north of us or east, um, in the outlying areas. And that's where they live, that's where they buy their groceries, that's where they eat out, do their shopping, spend their discretionary income. Not a good thing for our local businesses, not a good thing for our city government missing out on those tax dollars, and thus for the residents of our community who depend on the city to provide the structures that, that we need. I also, you've heard this already a couple times this evening, but, you know, definitely I feel like it's going to benefit a number of the schools in the Westminster School District, um, who have vacancies that could be filled by young families with young school aged children, who would likely be a number of the people that move into a community like this. The missing middle is a real thing in Westminster, I can tell you for sure. As well as the historic Westminster Business District, I feel would benefit from having these folks in that proximity as well. I know it's a distance away, but there's, there's going to be plenty of businesses going to spill over that direction. One of the things that I love about this city, I'm sure you do too, is our dedication to our open spaces and trails. But what that requires is that we make the best possible use of, you know, what few areas we have for a project like this. Um, in my opinion, the builders and developers and what I see going on.
Sir, your time's up.
Thank you. Um, it could do a lot worse. Thank you.
All right, I have David Sinkey, Linda Grabiel, and Lance Nading are the next ones up. Mr. Sinkey?
Good evening, Mayor. And City Council. My name is David Sinkey, 712 Main Street, Lewisville, Colorado. I'm the president of Boulder Creek Neighborhoods, and our mission is to add to the diversity of the housing supply. Since 2006, we have built nearly 2,000 homes across the Front Range. Pardon me. For many years, we focused primarily on housing options for seniors and empty nesters. We have a reputation for building innovative, single level homes that feature universal design elements, low maintenance materials, and very high energy efficiency. While we remain dedicated to this type of targeted senior housing in Westminster and along the Front Range, I am here tonight to provide you with my perspective for the need for miss, missing middle housing. In 2018, my company announced that we would be building 34 we cottages in Denver. We designed these small, single family homes because we kept hearing from buyers with a desire for something different, not a large, single family home, and not an apartment. As we all know, condos are hard to come by in this market. The average size and cost of a single family home has grown significantly in the past several decades. In the 1950s, homes were averaging 950 square feet. They now average twice that size. We cottage homes range in size from 950 to 1,250 square feet, and I can tell you that we were a bit nervous about bringing these homes initially to market. Most home builders decided that a single family home needed to have a two car garage, a five piece bath, and three to four bedrooms minimum. We were concerned that those on our waiting list would react negatively to the floor plan details. The opposite was true. To our surprise, local media ran stories about the new, right sized homes, and within 10 days, we had over 700 people on the waiting list. These homes are now built and occupied, and we have had the opportunity to learn from those who now live in a we cottage. But we also spent time talking to those who were on the list. Most significant takeaway was the broad variety of people looking for a housing option that did not exist. There is a missing middle. We sold we cottages to seniors, 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 families, empty nesters, never nesters, divorcees, never marrieds, widows and first time homebuyers. Homes like the we cottage are only a small part of the equation when it comes to solving for the missile, missing middle housing that is needed. At Boulder Creek, we are actively searching for forward looking communities like Uplands, where considerable thought is given to walkable, tree lined streets that are fronted with porches and storefronts and not garage doors. I believe this diverse infill project will revitalize surrounding commercial properties while giving existing residents of Westminster additional housing options to choose from. To that end, I encourage you to approve the conference of plan amendments before you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Grabiel?
Hi, I'm Linda Grabiel, and I reside near Tuscany Hills, of all things, so I understand the density there. I represent the historical nature of the property, and you will be getting a packet of maps. Uh, there's two maps I want you to look at. One in the middle to the end has actually the outlines of the C and E, and those are on maps that are over 100 years old. Notice the density that was proposed back then. The other one that's of interest is the Willetts Farm Map. It's 1899. I mentioned Willetts Farm Map, and even back then, this property was never considered a farm. So just for your consideration, so look at that, that's historical fact. I would like to speak to parcel B. This is my passion. I work up at Pillar of Fire, and I go past this parcel every day on my way home. And especially as the weather gets warmer, we have these beautiful sunsets. And this area is the part that's featured already in the news when people are turning the pictures and they say, and this was taken from the Westminster Hill in Westminster. This is that very place. And so when they talk about that purple triangle being open space, that is key. They're talking about keeping that clear. When you look out there, you can't even see houses because it's up on a hill. When it's clean shaven, right now, there's stubble there. It's just beautiful view. It's one of the best. Uh, upkeep would be minimal, I think, um, because you're not going to be developing it as a park. You'd be developing it for a place for people to come and take pictures or just enjoy the view. Um, signage of the name of the mountains would be nice as well. You know, Mount Evans, James Peak, Long's Peak, all of those up above. And this would be a tangible gift back to the people. We have a million dollar view here in Westminster. The people all over the world go, you get to see this every day? Yes, we do. Uh, and we can develop that. I know I've talked to the developers, and they think that this is wonderful to give back to the community, the views for everyone to enjoy. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Next will be Patricia Hammon.
Thank you, council members. My name's Lance Nading. I've been following this through the local media. I went to school, Random High School, attended Clear Lake Junior High and Mets, Mets Elementary. So I feel like my heart's here in Westminster, I've been a big part of the community my entire life. Parents went to Westminster High School. Uh, I'm sorry, I want to go on a particular order, and my iPhone just did its thing. Went off to college at University of Colorado, traveled the world, did my thing, started a business. So over the years, I've seen, I've seen the development of the, of the city, and, you know, many things have been great, quite frankly, you know, really some wonderful stuff. I do, am concerned about the sprawl, um, that Thornton and Westminster, and unfortunately not North Glenn, but, um, the cities have really developed their, their base of population by, by growing geographically. The issue with that is, is many of you may know that the United States of America is actually not growing, it's shrinking. If it weren't for immigration, the point, the 0.8% growth we had in 2017, the country actually would have shrank. So cities are in fact competing for population. That's just the fact. It is. And you're either growing, you're shrinking, one or the other. With, with shrinkage, you get less tax base, you get less opportunity to embrace the most modern things in our economy. With growth, you get a bigger tax base, and you get all those wonderful things that, that cities would want to embrace going forward to sustain their long term viability into the future. Having grown up at 84th and Pecos, I'm very familiar with 84th and Federal, then on the Pillar of Fire land many, many times, and I can't think of a better opportunity to create density without sprawl. It's a very simple concept. I, I really think that it's important that cities are able to embrace that concept before they embrace the idea of, of getting wider and bigger, which is harder to police, fire, water, all those things. The core has to be strong and vibrant to have robust schools, robust retail, and robust public and private offerings of all sorts. Change is hard, it, it's, you know, it's always hard. Change is hard, it's not easy. You're elected to make hard decisions. You are, you are. I was thrilled that the planning board approved this unanimously. I'm hopeful you'll do the same. I had the opportunity to travel along Federal between the McDonald's and the Eagles, um, you know, site there. And, you know, while I don't want to be judgmental, the businesses are wanting, they really are. They're not, they're not new, they're not vibrant, they're mom and pop shops, a lot of wheat stores, that kind of thing. And, uh, you know, this is a great opportunity. I really encourage you to embrace it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Patricia Hammon?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My reason for being here is a little more personal and I guess nostalgic than, than the speakers that I've heard previously. I am hoping for a trickle down effect. I was raised in Shaw Heights. I graduated from Old Westy at 73rd and Lowell, the real Westminster High School, and I'm proud of always being a Westy warrior. At any rate, uh, there's a lot of nostalgia involved for me in that area. We recently had, last August, my classmates, we had our 60th reunion at the, the Grange Hall. And so we, we all still really relate to what we experienced in those years in the 50s. And we all also realized that a lot of things had changed since we were at Old Westy, and much of it was not as good as it was when we were there in the 50s. So my hope is the trickle down effect by supporting this Uplands project would be that that area would receive some of the upgrades that it needs. I also know that it's now the designated art district. I'm an artist. I was in gallery 3698 until it did close. I'm involved with the Art River Gallery, and I was very instrumental with administering the, the jazz festivals. I was in charge of all of the vendors when we did that, and I still relate to that as the Old Westy football field. But at any rate, I, I still do have a, a big heart for Old Westminster, and I'm hoping that this will bring new families, uh, new homes, new tax dollars, and it will trickle down to make us the kind of art district that is like Old Orvada, Littleton, North Denver. We have that potential. And I hope that some of this can happen with this project. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've had a request for a short bio break. As soon as we come back, Loopy Martinez, Karen Clavety, Charles Ragsdale, and Kurt Arstet, those will be the next group up. We're going to take a short pause.
How are you? Yeah, just finish it up for you. We're already here. Yeah, just do it for you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let me catch you up on some issues that are going on. Our weather conditions, as some of you may be aware, are deteriorating very fast. Our roads are getting to a position of not necessarily being safe. We had already planned to curtail at 11:30, but I checked with the PD, we checked with dispatch and our public works. Because of the deteriorating conditions of the weather outside and making sure you get home safely, I'm going to ask the council to modify the end time for tonight back to...
Now.
Now. Which is 10:36, and then we will reconvene tomorrow night at 6:30.
You need to make a motion to continue.
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting there. I'll just get off the mic over there. So as soon as we can get a motion made to change the end time for tonight from 11:30 to 10:37, then we will recess until tomorrow night at 6:30. Ms. Cully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we defer the rest of our meeting at 10:37 until tomorrow night at 6:30, which would be February 11th, and we adjourn now.
Mr. Demont?
Second.
I have a motion to second, council by voice vote, please. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned until tomorrow night, or rather, we are in recess until tomorrow night at 6:30. Make sure that, make sure that if you missed a sheet, make sure if we found somebody who we couldn't find a sheet for, make sure you sign a sheet tonight and turn it in to the city clerk before you leave if you want to talk.